Good evening. This is the regular monthly meeting of the Garrett Park Town Council. I'll call the meeting to order. The first the first order of business is approval of the agenda as circulated. The mayor will ask that an item be moved from action to the consent agenda, namely authorization to turnkey properties for rehabilitation work to the maintenance building, information for which has been circulated to the council. So that the agenda will now have two items under the consent agenda and no action items. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as just amended?
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda as just amended.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In unanimous? Thank you. We will move then to the consent agenda, which consists of two items. The approval of the October 14, 2024, regular town council meeting minutes and the authorization for the contract to turnkey properties for rehabilitation work at the maintenance shed. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda has been adopted. And we move to the next item on the regular agenda, which is presentations by residents. I notice we have two present in the in a town hall and a half dozen or so virtually. Are there any presentations by residents? Anyone online? Hearing none, we can move to the financial audit results, except we don't have the auditor here, do we? Online.
I'm here online.
I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Very good. Chris Lehman.
Yes, thank you for having me.
SB and company with respect to the fiscal year 2024 audit.
Chris, do you have a presentation?
I do, if I'm able to share it. It looks like I don't have the ability to share.
You will. Let me just make you a code. You should be able to share your screen now.
Okay, just bear with me here. Are you able to, are you seeing the presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. I'll keep this high level. If there's any questions that you all have, feel free to jump in as I go through this. This presentation represents our firm and industry required communications related to the fiscal year 2024 financial statement audit that we've completed. Again, I'm Chris Lehman. I was the engagement partner for the financial statement audit again this year. So we were engaged really to do two items. One is the 2024 financial statement audit for the town. In addition, we assist with completing what's termed the Uniform Financial Report or UFR report. Both the financial statements and the UFR are required to be submitted to the state by the October 31st deadline, and both of those items have been completed by the deadline. At a high level here, we've issued a clean or what's termed unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That would be the best opinion we could give under professional standards. We did not discover any instances of fraud. A financial statement audit, it's not a forensic audit, but we are required to have a healthy skepticism of fraud. We identified no material weaknesses in the internal control structure, and we received the full cooperation of management. This here is just a picture of our risk-based audit approach. The next slide that I'll walk through goes to our assessment of the, really the second phase, where we assess the design and the operation of the town's internal controls related to the financial statements. And before we get into the key processes, we also consider the control environment that the entity operates in, looking at the five interrelated components there, that all five of those components help result in a strong internal control environment for the town. In addition, we look at certain key processes that impact the financial statements. Look at treasury from a bank and investment statement reconciliation, certain estimates within the financial statements. Look at management's process for timely closing the books and preparing an accurate trial balance ready for audit. We also do a testing around the cash dispersments and the expenditure cycle, as well as from a revenue perspective. And we've concluded that the environment was effective for the period under audit, as well as we had effective results from our testing of key processes. Any questions so far? Okay.
None, none here.
And I just took a couple slides of just highlighted financial activity. Now, what's in the financial statements we've issued? The financials are on really two different basis of accounting. The general fund is on what's termed the modified accrual accounting. And then there's also what's termed the entity-wide financial statements, which report all fixed assets and long-term liabilities, which are not reported on the general fund financial statements. So this picture is a snapshot of the entity-wide financial statements that also reports the capital assets, as well as some long-term liabilities. You'll see kind of all in for the town. For the end of 2024, total assets were just under $7 million for the year. That's an increase of, from about 6.4 million in the prior year. One item that you'll see that's, with the growth in the capital assets, there was some spending of the ARPA funds during 2024, which were used for capital-related activities. So there's additional capital assets that were capitalized as part of that. Conversely, you'll see on the liability side, liabilities have gone down from just over $1 million down to roughly $639,000. The largest factor of that decrease again was the ARPA money that was deferred or unearned back in '23. More of that was earned in '24 through the spending of projects. So that liability for unearned ARPA revenue has decreased in fiscal year 2024. So all in, there's been a growth in the town's net position. So net position at the end of 2023 was roughly 5.3 million. And at the end of 2024, that had grew to roughly $6.3 million. The increase there is really twofold. If you look here on the next slide. So the ARPA, the ARPA revenue was included, or the recognition of the ARPA spending on projects is included in the operating and capital grant line item. With the, with the offset resulting in capital assets, that will later be accounted for through depreciation expense as those assets are placed in the service and depreciated. Also, income taxes on an entity-wide basis had also increased. So looking at that, total revenue was at roughly 2.7 million compared to 1.9 million in the prior year against expenses of 1.7 and 1.6 million respectively. So there's a positive change overall in net position for 2024 of about $968,000. Again, this is entity-wide basis, so it's a little different between this and the general fund. But again, this just gives a picture from an entity-wide perspective of the town's results for the year. Any questions there?
I do have a question about that.
Yes.
I believe during this time period, the town accepted the Grotto property. Is that part of this net asset change in terms of real property assets?
No, because the, the property wouldn't go through the P and L here. That would be a function of the capital assets. So that's, that's, I don't believe that that's impacting the net position here. What's impacting the net position is the ARPA funds and the income tax there.
Okay, so it's only representing our investments in capital assets as opposed to?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The last few slides really, and I'm not going to read through each one of these. And you know, if we had difficulties getting through the financials, you know, getting through the audit, if we had disagreements with management, as I mentioned before, we had no fraud that we uncovered. We had no material weaknesses. There's really nothing of a negative nature I need to bring to the council's attention through the audit process. I, we got, like I said, we got the full cooperation from Barb, Mary, and the town. We also were able to meet the deadline for the issuing the financial statements to the state. Probably as about a boring of an audit as you could get, which is typically what you want to hear in an audit. So other than that, I mean, I have my contact information here in the back. If there's any questions outside of audit season, especially as it relates to any accounting matters or items that'll impact the financial statements, we can discuss those items as they're fresh or as you're dealing with those transactions. But that's really all I had to present for this evening.
Well, let me go back to the issue of capital assets. How, how do we value our real property holdings in Garrett Park?
Well, if it's, if it's a purchase of a building or an asset, it's going to be based on cost.
Which are then depreciated.
Which would that, yeah, so it would depreciate into future years. That's, that's why, part of the reason why you see such a large uptick in the net position, and this is the kind of the quirkiness of grant accounting, is that ARPA money was spent on, during the year on qualified expenses. So, but those expenses are capital in nature. So what's happening through the profit and loss statement, if you hear, if you will here, is the recognition of grant funds without yet a corresponding expense, because it's going to be captured through future years through depreciation expense. So the purchases you're going to see here in capital assets on a cost basis, and then based upon the estimated useful lives determined by the town, that'll be captured as future depreciation expense.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything further with respect to the audit? Well, I guess that would be all I would have to.
Thanks and appreciation to the auditors and to the town staff and Mary.
Passing.
For, for giving us a boring audit.
Yeah.
Flying colors.
Hopefully they felt like it was boring, but they have to deal with all my questions, so I don't want to speak for them, but.
All right. Well, thank you for signing on this evening.
Yep, I appreciate your time, everyone, and enjoy the rest of your meeting. Thank you.
Very good.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion or anything to approve this or accept it or?
I don't think.
No. You do.
Okay.
For how, for how long has this company been doing our audit, Barbara?
Mary is on the line. Mary, how long have we been with SB and C? Predates my tenure. I think it goes back roughly 10 years, Mary. Is that correct?
Well, that, that's okay.
Yeah, we will be bidding out, we will be bidding out the service.
Okay. Thank you. Very well, we will move then to the town manager's report.
Thank you. First of all, just a couple comments on the financial report for the month of October. At last month's meeting, I mentioned to you that our investment revenues as of September 30th appeared to be lagging receipts for the same time period last year, as indicated in my report. Last month, we were awaiting receipt of the quarterly interest payment from the Montgomery County Investment Pool, where we have a significant portion of our funds. That quarterly payment was received during the month of October with just roughly $19,000. So if you look at the financial report now and you look at investment revenues this year compared to the same time period last year, it's, you know, essentially dead even. I did want to note that in other receipts, which is account 5.4, we did receive a payment from the local government insurance trust, or Legit, as many of you know it, which is our primary insurance provider. The amount of that payment was a refund check in the amount of $1,123. Legit is under new leadership. They have a new executive director. And during their review of their business practices, they found a flaw in the methodology that had been used to calculate property premiums over the past 10 years. Garrett Park was one of those who was found to have slightly overpaid. And so that is the basis for the refund check of roughly $1,100. I know you all are very interested in what we spend on the arboretum. So far in fiscal year 2025, we have spent $45,826 on tree-related activities, which include tree removal, deadwood removal pruning, and the planting of new trees on the Grotto property. And then lastly, in terms of the October financial report, if you look at your reserve fund summary, you will see an addition under Penn Place tenant security deposits of $8,135. This was the additional payment that Black Market made to bring the security deposit in line with that required by the new lease that went into effect on July 1st. Before I move on, are there any questions about the October financial report? If not, just wanted to touch briefly on our memorandum of understanding with SHA for Strathmore Avenue. As some of you may recall, back in May, we did execute a MOU with SHA regarding the stretch of MD 547 of Strathmore Avenue that is in Garrett Park. That MOU governs maintenance of the right-of-way and gives the town the authority to undertake certain tree-related activities along the stretch of Strathmore. To date, we have received reimbursement in the amount of $2,655 from SHA. That was the payment for the reimbursement for the invoice that I filed that covered May 16th, 2024, which was the effective date of the MOU through June 30th. I have filed for reimbursement for the second quarter. Actually, guys, it would be the September, quarter that ended September 30th. So it's the second quarter of our fiscal year, but the third quarter of the calendar year. And the amount of that invoice is $1,262.50. Kind of speaking of memorandums with governmental agencies, we also have a memorandum of agreement between the Maryland Historic Trust and the Maryland Department of Natural Resources that we executed in late 2023. This, they call it an MOA, has to do with the former Yendel property at 11321 Kennelworth Avenue. As you may recall, the MOA was required by the Maryland Historic Trust that we had to fulfill certain activities because of the demolition of the single-family home that was on that property. There were two stipulations that we were required to satisfy. One was providing MHT with photographic documentation of the house and property. Before the house was demolished, they wanted to have an accurate record of what was present on the site. We fulfilled that requirement. I received notification that we had fulfilled that requirement in March of 2024. They accepted the documentation we provided for their inventory records and their online database of architectural and archaeological sites. The second required action under the memorandum of agreement was we were required to develop a public history project that focused on the contributions of women in the conservation history of Garrett Park. The topic of this was recommended by the Montgomery County Planning Department, specifically their Historic Preservation Office. We elected to satisfy this requirement by the development of an online exhibit. That effort was led by our former town archivist Claire McDonald. In late September, I submitted a draft of the online exhibit to MHT, and they approved that on October 22nd. And there is a link to that online exhibit, which is now available for viewing, and we will get that on the website. But with publishing the online exhibit, we have now satisfied both requirements of the memorandum of agreement with MHT and DNR. Both MHT and the County Historic Preservation Office have expressed interest in publicizing the online exhibit through their respective channels, which would be nice, a nice promotion for Garrett Park. Just our maintenance team is busy as ever. Just a couple items, I did want to note that they had completed this fall's pre-planning project, which, as you know, was focused solely on the Grotto property on Argyle Avenue. The goal of the planting was to begin to restore the wooded look of the property, which looked a little bare after we removed all the invasive plants and trees in December of 2023. The maintenance team has also completed a number of projects, including pressure washing the bricks in front of the post office entrance to Penn Place. Looks really nice. So thanks to Mayor Keller for recommending that to the team. They've also washed street signs throughout the town and have been doing woodchipping work in, along the Porcupine Woods path. And lastly, I just wanted to give a shout out to our maintenance supervisor, George Miller. He is continuing to play an invaluable role in monitoring the work being performed for the road and sidewalk improvements project. And he also oversaw the contractual interior painting work in the common areas of Penn Place, which was completed in October. So before I get on to the more substantive item this evening, which is the status of our ARPA funds, are there any questions that anyone has? Not, I'll move on. So the amount of our final ARPA amount to be obligated was $1,033,918.69. Kind of some key dates and definitions that are associated with ARPA funding. Just as a reminder, cost must be obligated by December 31st of 2024. For federal reporting purposes, an obligation is an order placed for property and service, a contract, you know, a signed purchase order, something of that nature. And then funds must be expended by December 31st of 2026. Essentially, being expended means that you just have to have incurred a liability for work that was performed. Included in my report for the month of October is sort of a snapshot of where things stand with the town's ARPA funds. This was as of November 7th. I provided you with the account numbers, the amount that's been obligated and expended. And expended, in our case, actually means paid out. The amount that we have obligated but not yet expended. So as I mentioned, our total ARPA funding was roughly $1,034,000. We have obligated roughly $914,000, which leaves about roughly $120,000. That is not yet obligated. We did have a couple projects that have come in under budget, specifically the interior painting of the common areas of the Penn Place Building came in at about 50% of the cost that we had included in the budget. And while we haven't completed this project fully, the purchase of the replacement pickup truck that you had authorized will come in slightly under budget as well. Under your consent agenda, you did approve kind of a switch in some ARPA funding. We had a, had expected to spend funds on purchasing a piece of equipment. After further reflection, our maintenance supervisor suggested that those funds be allocated to do some rehabilitation work to the maintenance building, which you approved under your consent agenda. That cost is $11,550. Another ARPA-funded project is the replacement of the Penn Place fire alarm system. The system is outdated. We can't even get new parts for it. So this is a budgeted project and would be paid for 100% with ARPA funding. We have solicited quotes from two vendors and have received one price quotation already. Barring any kind of special meeting, basically this contract will be on your December agenda for approval. And the amount that was included or anticipated to be expended on that project was $50,000. I'd rather not share the quote that we have, just simply because we're waiting for another one. I think that's unfair to the vendor. Later on in your meeting, you will be discussing the installation of lights along the section of Waverly, going from the Penn Place Building to Montrose. This project is a budgeted ARPA project. Assuming that your discussion later this evening goes well and that you are able to kind of settle on a light fixture and a specific light pole this evening, that will allow us to basically get photometric work run, which will determine the precise number of fixtures that are required to light the area you previously indicated that you want to delight, which would be to the center of the street. It'll be somewhere between four and five poles. The remaining piece of the new pickup truck is just outfitting, changing equipment from one vehicle to another. I've asked Mr. Miller to go ahead, just based on the delivery date for the truck, which is probably going to be late December, to go ahead and just get a purchase order from that company that we, I can sign and execute. These are kind of the more substantive projects. We do have a few minor items that we will likely be using ARPA funds for. For example, we have one area in the town office that the lighting is very poor. We want to get some recessed lights put in the copy room, for example. So we have a few other minor items. But assuming your discussions later this evening go, go well, I'm, I'm not concerned about getting all our ARPA funds obligated by December 31st of this year, as we're required to do by the Treasury Department. Any questions about status of our ARPA funding?
If you run into any, anything unforeseen about obligating all those funds, we still have December meeting to.
You do. That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's what we're working towards. You'll be discussing.
I'll have to leave it to quite the 11th.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm happy.
It's 11th, that was 11th.
This is not my way of question, but just a recapitulation to make sure we've all understood. Looking at the chart on page three of your memo, and disregarding for the moment, the last three lines, the far right-hand column, other things being equal, is one that if there's remaining money in, we don't need to worry about until December of '26. Is that correct?
The funds have to be obligated by December 31st of 2024, but there's two more additional years for the town to actually spend the funds.
Yes.
That's correct. You're correct.
As, as it's headed, at least, these are funds that have been obligated and have therefore met the first of those two deadlines.
That's correct. So what's, if I, if I may, Mayor? So as I mentioned, the first column, obligated and expended, means the money's out the door.
Now, going to that last bit, ARPA funding not let, not yet obligated, 109, call it 120.
Right.
We have just authorized the expenditure of $11.5,000.
That's correct.
Will we, once you have the second quote
Right, that.
on the fire alarm system, will you need an authorization to award that?
Yes, yes, I will. And I anticipate, barring any reason why you all have a special meeting, that will be on your December meeting agenda.
Whatever amount that is, it will further reduce the 120.
That's correct.
And that leaves us with the two items. And, and outfitting work associated with the new pickup truck will also reduce it. I believe that will be a four-figure.
Yeah, it, last year, we had also purchased another vehicle. It's roughly in the neighborhood of about $4,000 to $5,000. I checked on the delivery date of the truck. Right now, they're telling us, and, and that purchase order has already been signed. So we just haven't paid for it because we haven't received the truck. What I asked Mr. Miller to do is just to get a purchase order from the company that we use to transfer equipment from one to the other, knowing that the delivery date of the truck is sort of questionable when it's actually hitting. But as long as we have a price from But as long as we have a price from the vendor and a price quotation that is essentially signed as a purchase order and a commitment for work, that will satisfy the ARPA.
And that amount, under our procurement guidelines, you can authorize
That's correct.
without coming to the council.
And then the large item is the Waverly Avenue lighting, which we'll be discussing later this evening. I did mention to Mayor Keller, and I met last week. I suspect that the lighting on Waverly may actually, Phil and I were talking this afternoon. The cost may actually exceed what we have left in ARPA funds, just depending on the fixture and the number of them. What you'll be discussing later this evening, so I don't want to get too far into detail. But what I've discussed with Councilmember Schulp is basically going with a firm that the town is our vendor for the Strathmore lighting. They are fairly all-encompassing firm. They could basically do the electrical work that's needed. We would order the poles and the bases. They can pour the concrete basis, just to keep things relatively simple, that we could have them basically do all the work that would be needed for the lighting. And I anticipate having, hopefully, that quote in hand, assuming y'all pick a fixture and a pole this evening, and hopefully that we will hit your regular December meeting agenda for that contract.
Anything further with respect to the town manager's report?
Just a quick question on the equipment obligated but not yet expended. Is that for the new truck? There's $53,000?
That's correct. The amount of the truck was $53,345. So it's obligated because I signed a price quotation, which essentially is binding us. That amount does not include the outfitting of the new truck, transferring equipment from one to another.
Right. Okay.
I have a question, Barb. Is there any risk that we obligate the exact amount we need to? And then during the course of expenditure, some portion of it comes in under budget? How do we deal with that in terms of making sure that we don't lose that underage?
If I can go through kind of the items that are obligated but not yet expended, and then generally as a starting point, so as I said, on the equipment, that is a fixed price that is known for the truck. The streets and curbs, what is obligated but not yet expended will likely go up. This is basically the $14,930.63 is largely the contractual amount that we will owe to SFMS for the Argyle and Kennelworth. That is a portion that they've not billed on. Also included in that figure is the October invoice from Clark Azar. They are obviously continuing to provide engineering services, but I couldn't estimate what that would be because that'll be a future invoice. The sidewalks, that SFMS has elected not to do any progress billings for that. I'm not sure quite why, but that's their business decision. The figure that is $59,879.35, that is the set contract amount that SFMS has. And then the Clark Azar invoice for October. I did want to mention that I received an email from someone at SFMS, it's not our project manager, it's their head of estimating. They did some additional patchwork at the direction of George Miller while they were paving the section on Waverly. To kind of your point, Gerald Lee, there will be a bit of a discussion here because I think they are going to be seeking a change order. We also do have the issue that still needs to be discussed with them regarding liquidated damages, because they are past the contractual completion date. So I think to your point, you know, that's probably the most likely issue with if there's any offset to what they owe us. And then the other public places, the amount obligated but not yet expended is actually an actual invoice that we received. You know, if we were to, you know, assess liquidated damages against SFMS for, I mean, the quality of their work has been excellent. They've been very good with our residents, but they are behind in terms of getting work done. You know, if for some reason, and that'll be a discussion I will have with the mayor, obviously, you know, we don't owe everything because we've assessed liquidated damages and there is an offset. Personally, I think that funding could be easily applied to the lighting project because I think that's going to come in much higher than everyone may be expecting. Barring that, as I shared with the mayor last week, I've also had a discussion with the owner of Empire Landscape that we use for a lot of our tree pruning. That is an existing contract that runs through June 30th. You know, if by surprise, everything comes in much cheaper than we're thinking and we still have a delta between our ARPA funds to be obligated and what we have, one option would be, knowing that we're going to have spring tree pruning work, is simply to take the difference and essentially sign a purchase order with Empire for a certain amount of work to be performed by June 30th, if that makes sense.
So is there an accounting mechanism, for lack of a better term, that allows, and do the treasury regulations allow for us to essentially overobligate in case we have lower expenditures from the designated ARPA obligations? Do you understand what I'm saying?
No, I understand what you're saying. If we...
If we calculate our obligations right to the penny,
Yeah.
then something comes in under in the expenditures. I'm just wondering how we address that after December 31st.
So if I compare your question back, so let's just say we think we have, I'll just use residual funds that we're going to do with Empire, and we think we're going to have $20,000 left to be obligated, but we actually end up with 30. Can we just go ahead and obligate the 30? Is that your question, Gerald Lee?
Well, my question is, you know, we have to get all of our obligations by the end of this December, and we do that.
Correct.
But then in the course of expenditures, if we get underruns, and then our obligations that we accounted for suddenly, we can no longer add new obligations?
Correct, yeah.
So I'm just trying to understand, is there risk there that we might kind of lose some of that funding to underrun?
I think...
Does my question make sense?
No, it does. Yes, it does. Here's what I would say, with the larger projects that are there. So with the road and sidewalk improvements project, except for the issue of liquidated damages, you know, and that conversation, I reminded, sent them a formal correspondence, reminding them back in October of what the completion date was. I mean, that's always a negotiation with a contractor candidly. They'll cite whether we cite other factors. You know, the truck purchase is what the truck purchase is. Barring the issue of liquidated damages, our contract with SFMS is what our contract is. We'll have two price quotations, as I mentioned, for the fire protection system. Those price quotations are, basically, we're going to have a signed contract with them. That's the amount they're bidding. That's the amount the town will be on the hook to pay them. So there's not as much wiggle room. I think the question mark, I think, is once again with the lighting for the Waverly sidewalk. The key thing is that you make some decisions tonight or you authorize someone who can make them outside of this meeting because we're at a stopping point until a fixture and a pole are selected. That is, out of everything that we're talking about, like I say, we have some very minor things, such as, like I say, trying to put some recessed lighting up in the copy room in the office. There are certainly opportunities to spend things. I think one of the things in terms of how we obligate things, you may recall that we had a discussion some time ago in terms of the impact of Davis Bacon, federal prevailing wage. The initial indication I had had from a consultant hired by the state to help non-entitlement units like Garrett Park kind of navigate everything. Their initial guidance was that it wasn't really clear, but it would probably be better to assume that prevailing wage applied. I had followed up with them about, as mentioned in my memo, there was sort of this weird accounting thing where what we're obligating is actually less than what they actually gave us. And the state did some their own accounting work for that. And I was just talking to one of the consultants about making sure I was using the right number in preparing this report, because we did receive more funding than we actually have to obligate. It's like $5.27, so we're not talking a lot of money. During the course of that conversation, it was a different member of the firm, the consulting firm hired by the state. And I raised the issue of prevailing wage, because that is becoming more important when we're talking about the fire alarm system, the lighting systems. And apparently, Treasury later gave guidance saying that as long as a project was fully funded with ARPA funds, with a few exceptions, which are not applicable here in Garrett Park, Davis Bacon doesn't apply. So it's good to have that resolved now, because that certainly impacts the wage rates.
Sorry, does apply or does not?
It does not.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there was like an exception, Stephen, like if we were doing a project under the Surface Transportation Act, which we're not. But, you know, kind of the criteria is that the project is fully funded. And I know that was one of the issues when I was talking to Empire, is that they kind of needed to know if it was going to apply or if it wasn't, if we chose to essentially enter into some contract with them, because it does impact what they pay their people. And there are certain record-keeping requirements. So I don't know, Gerald Lee, that may be a very long way. I'm not sure I get your question, but I think most of the items that are here, there will be set contracts, so it will be very difficult for the town to have wiggle room downward, because by signing a contract, based on a certain scope of work, we're obligating ourselves to pay that vendor that amount. I think there's really not a risk, but if we find out that some of these things are way cheaper than we thought they were going to be, such as the Waverly lighting, Phil and I have talked about this. I'm not expecting that. We have a bit of a benchmark of what things cost in terms of the two replacement poles that we purchased for Strathmore and had installed, and the two inventory poles. Those were right around $45,000 in total, and two of those poles were not even installed. They were just delivered to us. And we're talking about electrical work and having concrete bases poured.
So maybe to address the question, it might be, I wonder if it would be possible, and maybe this gets to Gerald Lee's point, to overcommit to contracts of, say, 5% more than the ARPA funds as part of the ARPA funds, because we can only spend the exact amount of the funds anyway? Does that answer?
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering if there is a way that you and Mary and Kayla can can organize our listing of obligations to include enough big contracts that put us actually over the amount,
Yeah.
such that when our expenditures come in, we haven't only obligated right to the penny?
I think what will become clearer is when you have these large contracts on your agenda in December, which is the fire protection system and, hopefully not being overly optimistic, Waverly.
We will also, excuse me, by then have a better reading on whether the the offset
Right. for liquidated damages.
On the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Really figures here or not.
Yeah, I mean, if you, you know, basically for Waverly, all that's really left to do is some railings, there was some correspondence over email about that today. They have to plant some pachysandra on the two hill sides. But, and obviously, there's been work at Kennelworth and Argyle. That project is almost effectively done at this point.
Okay. Yeah, I don't want to belabor it. I just mostly, I want to make sure we understand that potential risk and mitigate for it.
No, I understand the concern.
Any other questions?
Anything further on the town manager's report? If not, you know...
Oh, actually, I do have a question. Um, Barb, can you give an update on the Argyle intersection work? There was some resident comments that were sent to the council today about concerns about the positioning of the median relative to room for the traffic lanes on Argyle.
Yeah, so as the emails were coming in, as you know, George Miller is kind of our person out in the field. John Strong from Clark Azar was out there yesterday examining the forms to make sure they conform to the plan. When I saw those emails today, I asked George Miller to go out, just, you know, review the plans again, make sure that what was happening, you know, on the ground matched. I understand that from the emails, there was some concern about sort of the width. So George actually did kind of measurements, if you're on Argyle and going up towards Kennelworth. You know, as you go closer to Kennelworth, the roadway is actually getting wider. But at the more narrow point, you know, before it starts that sort of progression, it's right in line with basically the width of the street further down Argyle. So the construction has been done according to plan. You know, I think, I mean, I came in this morning from Strathmore, turning onto Montrose. I think anytime you have streets and you have parking on both sides, somewhat de facto, one car can pass, and that was myself this morning. You know, someone else was coming up Montrose as I was going down towards Penn Place. One of us pulled over, so the other person could go by. So, you know, I think if you look at how wide Argyle was, you know, prior to sort of the curb being bumped out, you know, certainly it's more narrow, and that was exactly what the work was designed to do. But as I said, even at the sort of the most narrow point, it is equivalent in width to other parts of Argyle that were not impacted by the construction at all.
Yeah, I understand that. And I was trying to remember if, when we discussed this project and approved it, if we had made any definite decisions about whether we would need to add any parking restrictions in the area. But I'd like to sort of put on our radar for, I don't know if it's necessarily required to be a council decision, but it does seem like we should be restricting parking at, on the east, west, north, south, on the east side of Argyle from the corner of Kennelworth for some amount. I mean, you generally shouldn't be parking that close to an intersection anyway, but right now, people can.
Yeah.
You know, there was a work truck parked there today when I went to the site.
Today was...
But maybe normally people don't park there, but
Yeah.
what's to stop them if we don't do something?
In talking to George about this, and I think you raise a very good point. He flagged one vehicle that parks regularly on Kennelworth, sort of like where the T comes in. That was one space that George, in talking to him about it, thought perhaps should be noted as no parking. That one space in particular. But I think that's certainly a discussion worth having.
So what would be, you know, presuming we finish this work within the next 30 days, whose purview is it to make that decision about designated some additional new parking areas there and putting that in place?
You all may recall this, and I don't want to belabor this, and I can send you more information, but if you go back a number of years, there was essentially a delegation to the then-town manager to develop things that were traffic-related, parking, et cetera. I was looking into it because I was trying to get a handle when I first started about, you know, who issues parking citations? Andrea had been doing a lot of work in terms of with the county. The long story short, all of those parking restrictions should likely be formally adopted by the council in the opinion of the town attorney. That was not how they were put in place before. It was more of a regulation. And Ron Bolt basically said from an enforcement standpoint that those should basically be formally adopted by the council. And that is typically what you see in most municipal codes. There will actually be an appendix that lists essentially any type of parking or speed restrictions.
Well, that's for another day.
Yes, but...
Meanwhile, as I recall that legislation, the town manager can propose a regulation. The town council has a negative option to raise questions about it or objections, and if there are non-forthcoming, the regulation takes effect.
Yeah. We can certainly have some discussion about this at your next meeting. I know you've got a full agenda ahead of you, but I appreciate the issue you're raising, Gerald Lee. And from what George is seeing on the street, there is at least an area that probably should be marked as no parking.
Right. I just want to make sure that we, you know, we're completing this work. I want to make sure we keep it on our agenda to put the right traffic... traffic restrictions or coordination in place to make sure it's a holistic package that improves the intersection rather than making things worse for the neighbors.
That is certainly not our intent.
Thank you.
There's nothing further with respect to the town manager's report. We move to the next item, which is un, under unfinished business, which is the town hall renovation. Barb, would you like to start?
Sure, I'll just make some introductory comments. So back in December, the then mayor and town council discussed and agreed upon a new concept plan for the renovation of town hall. We're now referring to that as option four. Also on, at that same town council meeting, you authorized obtaining a cost estimated for option four. As a reminder, part of this was needed for our funding applications. We needed to have a definite scope of, well, at least a proposed scope of work and some idea of what that would cost. For the most part, in the intervening months since December of 2023, our focus has largely been on the pursuit of grants for the project to try to eliminate any funding gap between the projected cost of option four and what we had in hand. And certainly the town council as part of the FY 2025 budget process allocated significant funding to the town hall project. I'm kind of fast forward to September of, of 2024. You did make a decision on September ninth that you wanted to continue working with Weedham and Architects for future design work associated with the renovation of town hall. No decision was made at that time on whether to advance option four to a more detailed level of design, or if there were elements of this alternative that should be modified or removed. There have been two primary topics that have been talked about at your, both your September and your October meeting. One of those was the how to handle the rear building addition. Option four, as a reminder, assumes that the rear building addition will be basically removed and everything will be new construction. Councilmember Paskowski has shared his thoughts in a document and again at the October meeting about pursuing a possible renovation of that space as opposed to reconstruction. And that I assume is one of the issues you'll be talking about this evening. There has also been some back and forth about should further investigative work be done to determine the status of the building foundation. As included in the staff memo, and this information has been shared before, was comments that have been provided from Axios's lead assess, building assessor in terms of what they looked at as part of their work. The nineteen ninety drawings for the work that was done here at town hall indicate that some remedial work was done to strengthen the flooring in piers. We certainly, should that be your desire, could hire a structural engineer to do some further investigation. But even if you do that, I, I do feel compelled to note that it's still possible that there could be unforeseen or hidden conditions, which always happens with renovation projects. In terms of project funding, based on the cost estimate for option four and estimated permitting cost and design and consultant fees, we're sitting right at a projected cost of three point one million. I would note, and, and Greg Weedman would tell you the same thing, that cost estimate was done on concept drawings. It is likely, though I can't guarantee that, that some of that cost would likely go down somewhat. I'm not talking twenty five, fifty percent, please know that. As we do more detailed design work and you, we get another round of cost estimates. You know, right now you all have set aside, we have identified funding of two million dollars. That two million dollars includes a three hundred thousand dollar legislative bond initiative award from the state of Maryland. So that is part of that two million dollar figure. As a reminder, we have a five hundred thousand dollar federal funding application that is pending. We made our way through the Senate Appropriations Committee. We will not know the status of that five hundred thousand until Congress finalizes a new budget and the president signs it into law. As Gerald Lee knows, as a federal employee, right now the federal budget is on a continuing resolution. So we'll have to kind of wait and see with that timing. Just as a reminder, the basis of option four and that scope of work has formed the basis of the, the state funding application, which we were successful in, and the pending federal funding application. Assuming that three point one million dollar cost does not come down through more detailed design and cost estimation, we would have a funding shortfall of one point one million without federal funding and a six hundred thousand dollar shortfall if we get the full five hundred thousand dollars in federal funding. Probably a conversation for another day, but I did include in here some information we had talked about back in February as part of the budget process. The state at my request had provided some preliminary debt service schedules just to get a night, to be able to answer some of the questions that you all had about bonding. You know, any kind of debt service schedule is a function of both the amount borrowed, the bond maturity, and the economic climate at the time. The bonds would actually be issued, so there's a lot of ifs in this scenario. But based on a million dollar debt issuance with a bond maturity of twenty years, the state had given us a preliminary debt service schedule showing that debt service payments would be about seventy six thousand dollars annually. So that's a discussion down the road for you all. I think as far as this evening, you know, my suggested decision points for you all is one, determine whether you want to hire a structural engineer to do further investigation of the foundation and first floor deck, knowing that that's not going to provide a hundred percent certainty. Certainly, I think the more compelling issue this evening is the discussion of option four. Specifically, how you want to handle the rear building addition, because I think that's what most of the conversation has focused on. If it was option four, which you want to go with to go to the next level of design, or are there some changes to that scope of work? If you were to change the scope of work, I, I would need to have some discussions with the state about how, if at all, that would impact the legislative bond initiative award. It would likely not be overly material to the federal funding application because they were not going to fund that part of it anyway. And then depending on how your discussion goes this evening, you know, if you're at the point where you feel comfortable doing so, you could provide direction for me to reach out to Weedham and to get an actual proposal for design development services, which it would be the next phase of detailed design.
May also be, and correct me if I'm wrong, it may be also important to note that if we decided to go back to something like the old option one, which would keep the front addition, that would probably negate the Senate.
Oh, the federal funding.
Because it's historic based and that.
Correct. Yeah. So Stephen's correct. As we were trying to get our way through appropriations committee and I was getting bombarded with questions from Senator Carden's office primarily on behalf of the National Park Service, that became kind of the critical part of the discussion in terms of what would qualify. And Stephen is a hundred percent correct. We were able, I think, to successfully argue that removal of the front building addition had a historic component which fit in with the funding program. Nothing in the back would qualify under the, the Saving America's Treasures program, because they, they typically don't pay for demolition unless there's a historic restoration aspect of it.
Kind of demolishing the non-historic to get to the historic. So
Correct.
They needed to understand that part.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, so basically those are the only introductory comments, Mayor Carr, I wanted to make at this point. I'll, I'll turn it over to, to you and, and the council's discussion.
I usually like to get a motion on the table in order to facilitate discussion, but perhaps we should just have a little discussion first. I listened carefully to at least that portion of last month's meeting, which I missed. Listened to the recording with respect to this issue. It seems to me that we still have to make a sort of philosophical decision, a policy decision, which obviously has pragmatic implications as well, about the scope of the work there and whether we want to work within the envelope of the existing structure. And we're, and when we're talking about it, I, I should go back a step and say, we're talking largely about the rear. Assuming that we do not want to go back to step one, as Stephen just raised, and revisit the issue of restoring the front. Assuming that we retain the position that you seemed to reach earlier, that restoring the front and taking out the two later addition bathrooms, neither of which are ADA compliant at this point. That means that for all practical intents and purposes, our discussion is essentially about the nineteen twenties and nineteen fifties additions on the back. The frame addition with flat roof and so on. So let's start by discussing whether we really want to entertain the notion of working within that envelope in an effort to save some money. Given that we have two architects who've said that in their experience, endeavors of that sort are usually an exercise in false economy. That you usually run the risk of a higher number of change orders as you do the work. And that after the work, because you've basically just got a fixed up older structure, the issues of maintenance, upkeep, and eventual revisiting are higher. That was certainly the, the determination of the council twenty years ago when they say faced an analogous situation at Penn Place. Again, a nineteenth century structure with significant later additions on the front that essentially totally obscured the front, where it was decided to remove those and return that structure to its eighteenth century appearance. And a later mid twentieth century addition, which initially was considered for rehabilitation. And eventually the, and in fairly short order, the, the council at that time determined that that would be a false economy in that context. I believe although nothing's ever exactly parallel, that we have an analogous situation here. But I'd like to hear more discussion from the council in the hopes that we can nail down at least that issue before continuing with others in connection with this determination.
Well, I would say in the conversation we had in October, I don't think we had all of the information that we have in front of us tonight all in one place. And we, we were questioning whether we needed to do more investigation to better understand the, the structural integrity of the rear addition, the nineteen sixties addition. But with the additional information that we brought back together all in one place and, and with some of the email correspondence with the additional architects from from the Land use and advisory committee, to me, it seemed like there is more information all in one place that gives me the impression that it wouldn't be a good investment to, as we discussed last month, pay for more structural investigation. We'd be better off looking at what Mr. Weedham's firm recommended to us, which is to build a new addition in the back so that we are actually, you know, building something that we can be sure meets our needs into the future instead of having to keep, you know, maintaining an older substandard framing and structure base. So rereading all of the conditions assessment work that has been done today and the opinions of the multiple architects that we've had give us opinions has reaffirmed my feeling that that option four, more or less, is the more responsible route for us to take. And I do think that we could be taking that money that we'd be throwing into that structural assessment and putting into the actual architectural design work instead.
I think, I, I think you make some good points. I also would like to hear from, from Steve. The additional question that I have is about the cost, the opportunity cost over the years of the Penn Place interest. That is, if we incur new interests by taking out a bond, it seems to me that that could have an adverse effect on our local economy and the budget, especially if we have constraints at some point that we can't see now. After, who knows, if there's some sort of emergency expenditure, it would be nice not to already be in debt. Right? I mean, to me, that's part of the issue as well.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. If we go ahead with asking Weedham to develop the next phase of construction drawings for option four, upon which we could get a better cost estimate, which I think the grab of a lot of conversation over the last four months has been that that would likely, because it's, it's more precise and wouldn't require the estimator to build in so much wiggle room, as was the case with the previous estimate. And, and before giving him that go ahead, we would also see if we could identify now things that could be altered with respect to option four to reduce its cost. I was particularly, excuse me, I was particularly struck by Stephen's observation that has drawn option four includes two elaborate gables basically facing in directions where they can't be seen. I think we could address that to simplify the roof line. And, but still retain a certain amount of attic for whatever equipment might need or semi-dead storage might be needed there. I think Stephen's observation with respect to using so-called split unit or something, something other than the conventional force here, the system we have now would also be worth considering before it's given to Weedham for the next round. Those things considered, I would not think that there would be a need for a debt issuance for this building. I've made this observation before. It injects a large element, it injects a large element of delay. It has to go to a vote, which is potentially divisive, I think.
Referendum type of.
For referendum, right?
And I would prefer to save that because I agree, we shouldn't have too many bond issuances out at once for larger projects, including those that might not require increasing tax rate, but could be past any of these fees. So I, I would, I would try very hard to rule out at a fairly early juncker, the notion that we would have to resort to a bond issue for this building, my opinion.
So just to be clear, you think we could do it from scratch, but a little bit more economically? And avoid, even if we're, even if we have a million dollar shortfall, we think we can make up between the reestimation and some cutting of costs, we can still, we can still achieve this?
There's a lot of money in that framing, just in estimating all the, the gable framing and everything else. It could be perhaps simplified, so. And they have a pretty elaborate crawl space that might be overdone as well.
Well, speaking of that, I would say that if we're going to do a crawl space, we really should just do a full basement because we can use it for storage. We can use it for any number of things. And it's only going to be a few feet deeper than a crawl space, but it'll give us a lot more options, plus any chance of having to put any equipment up in the attic. I would think we may be able to get it downstairs in a basement, and it wouldn't be open for public access. Therefore, we wouldn't require in a basement and it wouldn't be open for public access. Therefore, we wouldn't require having ADA compliance or all that stuff there. But it would give us a lot of options.
I'm not sure that we're going to have a lot of equipment if we, it's only a thousand square foot addition. And if we, if you can do it with a wall mounted heat pump and do it with on demand hot water heating, both of them fit in a small, the latter fits in a small closet. So it's it's beyond the era of boilers and air handlers and a lot of the big equipment room, equipment that you used to have.
No, but if we look at, for instance, solar panels and stuff like that, we may need to have inverters or batteries or some other storage medium or something like that. And a good spot for that would be in a basement, not to mention.
I don't, didn't mean to interrupt.
Not not to mention, I mean, I think the town could use the storage for some equipment or some records or whatever at some point in the future.
We didn't have solar in the project currently. That's only going to add to the the budget. And then I think the storage is a tricky one, like Chris and I took a walk looking through like some of the storage and it's been his experience, I guess, to paraphrase and correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, that a lot of times it's estimated and it turns out to be more than was envisioned, I guess, and my experience, like dealing with a lot of designing these buildings is you you try to limit it because otherwise it becomes like a hoarding situation. You get a lot of people are like, oh, I'll I don't have space for this. I'll donate it to the town that gets stored and things never really go away. So you can easily fill it up if it's not, if it's not all planned, like what's going to be? Like, what's the purpose of the storage?
True, but for instance, you could build a room within a room to hold archives overflow or archives long-term storage, something like that. You've got possibility of Christmas decorations or other holiday decorations. I I think that it would, you know, for the amount of extra cost, I think it would be worth it. And
I I just worry about it. They're estimating over a thousand dollars per square foot, like thirteen hundred dollars per square foot for building in the back. It's a high number.
It appears to me that the kind of discrete issues we're bringing up now are the kinds of things we could discuss in an effort to bring down the scope of option three for purposes of the next stage of construction drawings.
Option four, you meant option four. Okay, I just want to verify.
Option three, I think, had a basement.
I I really want to take a step back and make a more fundamental decision now as between trying to use the envelope and and core elements of the existing space, the foundation, framing, flat roof and so on. Or revisit option four with an effort to present a somewhat pared down version for purposes of a round of more detailed construction drawings and more detailed and assumedly precise cost estimates. One end of pitch on that, but one minor point with respect to yours, Todd, is I think we're over two million dollars now.
Yeah.
Easily because we have uncommitted, unexpended funds from last year. A small, but every, every else. So let me hear your thoughts about the fundamental issue of whether we want to try to rehabilitate the existing structure or ask Mr. Wideman for the next round of construction documents, which would be essentially a pared down version of option four to the extent that we can identify things that we know now are susceptible of modification to simplify that proposal. And then an estimate.
If I can just backtrack really quickly, just to kind of the precursor to that question, I guess they were, there was Wheaton as an architect that had an opinion, George from in town gave another opinion. I was, there were three architects that gave opinions. I was the third one. So I'm a licensed architect myself and this building is a little bit different than, well, it's a lot different than Penn Place. I appreciate the the parallel of it, but that's a multi-story structure and we had to get egress elevators into it. So it's different than this. That's a one-story kind of very simple. It doesn't get much simpler than what's built back there. And we took another look at it. It's it's not in perfect shape, but it it looks salvageable. I didn't see anything and neither did Axios when they looked at this before. It's, it'd be different if you saw it and it was obvious that there was differential settling in the foundation. There were cracks. There was water intrusion, so on and so forth. It just looks like it's, it's not stellar construction, but it's all staying straight. The the big exception to that would be there's a dip in the floor in the back there, but a lot of times you you get that with a a building like this anyway, that, you know, it's kind of maybe built on a cheap, like this whole building was built on a cheap, even the front of the building was built on the cheap. It's just eighteen ninety cheap versus fifty's cheap. There's a sag in that floor, but that's the kind of thing that can and often is this fixed up by sistering Joyce or replacing Joyce or putting in new peers who are kind of shortening spans. A lot of those things are fixed when it's uncovered. And I guess it's, I would counter that the false, the false, false economy idea. It's, it's always as simple as to just say, well, just tear it down and build new. And then it's much more foolproof. My experience dealing with a lot of renovations at work is, and and I've been on the other side of this arguing, saying, hey, we're doing so much work to this building. Wouldn't it be cheaper to just like knock it down and start over? And and I hear it time and time again from our estimators and our construction experts that when you're saving a structure, you're really starting at like half of the replacement cost and you're trying to do it for less than half. So I think I I can't imagine how saving that shell would not for any love of the shell, but it would, it would have to be in the range of half or less of that one point two, whatever million that's estimated, which granted, I think that that estimate is high, but it just seems like an awful lot, you know, and I've said this many times, it's an awful lot to me, I think for a building that gets used, but it's not like it's used daily. It's not like it's used heavily, but it's for bathrooms, storage and a kitchen that gets used not that often. It's not never, but it's not like it's, it's not like it's the the community kitchen used all the time. So that's, and then it still is my big worry that, you know, we'll say, hey, whatever more funding we can have, just throw it at town hall and whatever costs, we'll just do it. No. You know, what is it in Jurassic Park? Like no, no expense was spared. Because then it just it it really sucks all the the funding out of everything else in town. And I'm personally, and this is kind of veering off the architectural point, I'm personally a lot more inclined and interested to use a lot more variety of things around town than just this building. So I think.
Well, I I will observe because I've I've heard at the margins of some of these arguments that the building is underused. The poll in twenty twenty-three indicated that only eight some odd percent of the of the residents don't use this building at least once a year. And that certainly comports with my anecdotal observation. I've been in here several times this year when the kitchen has been used as essentially a catering kitchen. And it would probably be much more amenable if it were arranged, again, as a catering kitchen, not a full cook cooking kitchen more professionally. So I don't think we're by by doing this right, and I think the addition as contemplated in option four is a little more than just the kitchen and bathrooms. It's rearranging some space to be a little more usable, a little more attractive, of a little more utility to the types of people who actually actually use this and rent it. Well, we seem to be going in circles.
But just to say, I'm not, I'm never have and not arguing that nobody ever uses, I think. And that survey, the vast majority of people used it one to four times a year. I guess so. What I'm trying to say is that over and over again, it's not like everybody's using it or most of the town is using this regularly. It's image used, it's not like it's not used, but it's it's, I think we've got to be careful not to go overboard on it.
There there may be a compromised position here, which could recognize, I I think I agree with Steve that we don't want to overspend. And I I think that's the message of all of us. And that there are other expenditures that may require us to be saving some of this budget. On the other hand, I can see the point that we would have more structural certainty if we start from scratch on the project. So the motion might be one to seek to a a pared down version of option four within cost constraints that are, you know, funding we can raise without going to external sources. I mean, certainly grants and public money without going to debt issuance. I think that would be, that might be a that I would like to make that motion.
Which is essentially to hire Wheaton to prepare the next round of construction documents after he has consulted with us. And we will come up with, in consultation with him, as many elements as we can think of to simplify option four as it currently exists.
And and
and then
within a budget that will not require any debt issuance. In other words, we have two million and we have the whatever, a hundred and thirty-six thousand available from last year, right? So we can, I'm sure we can squeeze the budget. We can probably get two and a half million for this, right? Which is.
That's what I'm arguing rather than not. I wonder if we can't just ask him to, can you design this to be two million? And the other thing with option four is that was purposely following the outline of that existing back foundation with the idea that you could demolish down the back addition and then check out the foundation with it all exposed. Then if it looks good, then try to reuse it. And if it looks bad, then you would just replace it. But then you would already have the plans kind of in that same dimensional area. But if if we want to move to just say, just go ahead and commit to new construction, maybe take that burden off of him of trying to follow that thing and say, hey, find the way that you can build this new addition with two million dollars, you know, for the whole property.
No, I don't think it is.
I think so, but who knows?
Because then, because that would bring him up to, I mean, these prices, I don't see this and I do, things are a lot fancier than this, a lot more complex than this all day. And I don't see a thousand dollars per square foot on anything except for high-end commercial kitchens. So I think the numbers are hopefully pretty high, but I wonder if like untethering, having to follow that footprint might help. Like maybe they do something where it's more of a like tear down an addition, have like a smaller connector piece that goes to something that's a more simpler construction that's not latched on to the historic structure that may they may have a chance of making things be more economical, more simple.
I mean, I would agree with that approach. I mean, I I personally, I we haven't really looked super hard to see what's behind the walls that I'm aware of or dug into the foundation to see what's down there. The ability to be able to to unchain him from the architect from having to use an existing foundation would definitely, I'm sure, help make it more flexible as to what needs to be done. I agree with not issuing, not issuing debt, but I believe that we only have one chance to get this thing right, in a manner of speaking, because you're not going to want to say, oh, my gosh, you know, we should have done this, we should have done that. It doesn't mean we have to do everything, but we could also make sure that we've allowed for provision. So in the future, if we want to do something, we could say, oh, pencil this in and maybe someday in the future we'll have the money to do it, or maybe we'll say, we'll never do it. But I think it would be worth it for us to at least look at a few things like that. I brought up the solar stuff, not so much because it was in these plans, it was not. But if we wanted to do it because people proposed that, then we could say, okay, we'll make the roof a little bit heavier. We'll put a pipe chase in to get the to get the wiring down to where it needs to be, that sort of stuff. But we don't need to pull the trigger around it if we decide we don't want to, or maybe we'll get a grant from somewhere and they'll be wanting to give the town free solar equipment for whatever reason. I mean, maybe even Pepco. I mean, I've seen crazier things happen back in years ago where they wanted generation capacity, so they basically started giving away energy upgrades as a way of getting generation capacity. But anyway, I digress. I think that the other thing is we also have the ability to now put in wider studs because in the past, everybody used two by fours and now I believe they're using two by sixes to get a little more insulation in the walls, make it a little more energy efficient. So all that considered, I believe that we should look at using a new foundation of whatever sort that turns out to be to allow for more flexibility, because maybe it's going to be better off, like Stephen said, to come up with something detached, or maybe it's going to be wide or narrow, or who knows, but.
I I guess we do. And and Todd, just to say that I I appreciate what you're saying and I I agree with the concept that we push for option four with some redesign to economize. However, I don't want us to put so many restrictions and tie both the architects in our hands with a very specific dollar amount. Because I think we need to leave ourselves some flexibility for the future. So it would be very concerning to me if we set a specific dollar amount for the economy or for our target budget. I I think giving the architect some broad direction about economizing will help us to get where we want to be without tying our hands.
What if we just tied one hand to a very broad idea of not incurring debt for this project?
Yeah, I mean, I think we haven't incurred debt unless we take the steps to incur debt. Meanwhile, we're getting a more detailed budget and we're continuing to evaluate the, the, the budget that we've set aside and continue to set aside for, for the project. And we within maybe the next six months or so, we'll have a certain outcome of the additional grant request that we'll have more intelligence by the time we get that more detailed budget based on or estimate based on the construction design. So we, you know, will have more certainty because all these things will come together. But we haven't tied our hands.
Agreed. I think part of the problem is that we never gave him a budget from the get-go. And I, that's what's got us in this predicament is he never really showed any sense of cross control.
Let's not worry so much about the past as the future. I think I receive an emerging consensus, but meanwhile, we have a couple, couple of people in the audience who've waited very patiently. Jack, do you have anything to add to this discussion? Full, full name and so on.
A former mayor, right?
No.
During the Penn Place.
Oh, no, I was, I just moved in. Is this on?
Yes.
Jack Mandell, three one four. Growth of the, I was a council member much later than that. I moved in right as all these discussions were taking place regarding Penn Place. I apologize, I am not as cognizant of the of the particulars, you know, I know there's a cost issue about renovating versus new construction, it seems to me, but I'm not exactly sure what one buys you versus the other. And I would love to understand, do they, do they they give the town, do they give the people in town something different between those two choices? Or are we just talking and finding? I don't know. And I would really be curious about that. That's kind of a fetching back to the council. What, what, what is the value of having new constructions versus value of having renovation in terms of the use of the space? I will tell you when I'm, when I'm hearing things about how often the space is used, I do want to point out that I started the film society. There was nothing like that before. And then we had a film society every year for twenty years. Before the film society, there was the Garrett Park Players doing plays. So Steve Welker, who creates, who has created an enormous number of activities in town, some of which Some of which will move into a, a space like this once it's available, I'm sure, because it's natural. So the idea that we have to count on what activities have taken place already, I think is extraordinarily short sighted. I think that the idea here is to create a level of excitement and enthusiasm about this building and not this continual. Harping over, are we spending a dollar or a dollar and a quarter, because you're gonna lose people's excitement about creating this space. And the idea is to create a space that people want to come to and will find reason to come here. They will find reason to come here. So I would, all I'd like to know is if you could help me understand, what is the. Fundamental difference besides cost? In, in terms of renovating versus new construction? Is there one?
There's no functional difference. It's the same rooms rearranged. Um, the storage is slightly bigger in option four. And the uh, the second assembly room is slightly smaller than other than that. It's the same. It's the same functions, just a lot more cost.
But that's, yeah, that's not quite true though, because the, as we just discussed by. Freeing the architect of the existing footprint, the architect may relay the thing out. To actually make it more functional. Right now, we've constrained. Uh, plus we know what we're gonna get in terms of what's the building gonna be like. We don't know for sure what's behind those walls. But we end up having to basically tear it down to the foundation because we found there's a lot of rot. We don't know that, or at least I don't. Not aware of knowing that. Um, and same goes with the foundation. I mean. It's assumed it's good and from what we've seen, it's good, but nobody's taken the shovel and dug a couple of test bits and said, what's really down there? No, I was just gonna say that, you know, it's already been mentioned that, that. The, some of the construction was done on the cheap and who knows, maybe the foundation was. And you wanna build a building only to find out the thing starts to settle. So the, that is where I see building new, yes, it may cost a little bit more, but we know we've got a known product. It meets all the requirements, it's currently known. And stuff like that, plus we could put in more insulation, a few things like that, but anyway.
Yeah, and I, I agree with certainty. I agree, I, I think the idea of. Giving us a, as, as citizens, the reason for enthusiasm. Like enthusiasm, you're gonna get a lot more enthusiasm by having this new space. Than you are by, by like just putting together like rehabbing what you already have. You're just not gonna have the same level of enthusiasm. And I think that's really a critical piece of this that I haven't heard anything about for a long time. There's no enthusiasm. It's all about, let's just get this thing done, let's just get this thing done.
I think you might have missed the earlier part, it's the, where the enthusiasm is and should be is like really restoring this room, this is the actual meeting room and then. Restoring that front facade, moving those restaurants off, then you get two new windows in the back, so. Really, the crux becomes really the, those more support spaces in the back, so nobody's arguing, and this town loves a straw man argument, um. That nobody's arguing that you would just like do a light brush everywhere. It's do it right. The thing I was pointing out is like doing it right here and then save your money on the back and it's, it's not just a little bit more to do construction, it's like. More than double to do your construction and if you're, uh, I like the idea of like untethering. Having to attach onto the back of the building the way it was done in the fifties, because maybe that gives a little bit more freedom of a independent structure, but. The more it opens up to being, you know, it's right, right now, it's like nine hundred and eighty square feet, I think that back addition, the way it's drawn, if. If it totally frees up to say, hey, um, why don't we go back and look at the functions again, maybe that assembly room becomes, you know, instead of two hundred, it becomes. Three hundred fifty square feet, the, the bathrooms get bigger, the kitchen gets bigger, all that, then all of a sudden, if you have a fifteen hundred square foot addition. Um, then you're just adding more costs into the back there and I just, you know. It'd be great if there was a ton of like functional upside to it, but I just don't see it and I'm, I'm still very wary, extremely wary of kinda like. I, I'd much rather spend my time in parks and I've heard a lot of other, you know, people my age and younger that are kind of the same way. It's not like. You know, again, this town loves a straw man argument, like people will hear that and say, oh, you, you know, it's me, like tear this building down, nobody ever said that or. Nobody ever says that nobody comes here, but it's just, um, I think everything has to be looked at in balance and we do this place really well and do other stuff really well. I, I just don't wanna spend three million dollars plus here and continue to come here four times a year.
That the possible cost overruns is concerning because the, the budget that we have. Has room for a certain scope of project. And I think if it goes too much beyond that, we can, we can generate problems. We do wanna be able to also have other capital outlays in the near future, right? I, but I, I mean, your point is a good one about sort of galvanizing people's enthusiasm and, and getting something going. But I, I mean, it just has to be tempered by the, the idea that we can. We, we just have to spend responsibly and also have other funds.
And, and, and I will say, the experience I had, just being here at the beginning of Penn Place. I'm not, not living through it and. Was fought for over and over.
Yeah.
Uh, with many of you guys have probably talked about this a lot. But the idea was, at the end, let's create something new. Um, and, and let's, let's make the most of something new and then it really seemed to work out. I don't, financially I can't speak to that, but in terms of the, the functional use of the space and the way people um. Worked around it, it seemed, it seemed best. So I apologize, I, I really haven't added very much, but I. I just want to thank you for all your work, obviously, I know it's sort of really difficult to make these decisions. Um, I happen to get excited, I don't mind spending a little money, I realize it's only my money. It's not the town's money. I don't mind spending a little of my money to bring a little more enthusiasm and excitement. And something new, new is, is more exciting to me than renovation, it's just there.
So we need a Brits campaign and we need to, to sell him one, right? Oh, you did the Brits. How much, how much did you raise off that?
That was, that was actually just to create a little garden space up and so we, we probably generated about twenty, we probably did about twenty-five thousand.
They've just been cleaned, incidentally, you can read the inscriptions. Uh, thank you. And I would observe that although this room is certainly the, the focus of almost any event here. The, the way the event works is very often a function of how easily the. The room at the back works as well. So although that area will contain. Certain elements, I think the way they are arrayed makes a big difference. Um, I've been to several events here very recently that involve the service of food on the old. Uh, council table, which is typically set up in the second room here. Um, it just, there, there just isn't room for circulation. So I think that relatively small changes um. In the aggregate will develop a certain synergy together with the things that we all agree should be done in this room. To make use of the, of the facility more exciting. Okay, um, I'm sorry, I've gone on.
I, I just wanna add to that, though, we did get a fair amount of feedback, both in the survey and from residents that. There was interest in having more space in the back to accommodate, say. Children's games or something in the back while more adult activities were going on in the bigger room, so. That's another type of slow situation that I think we wanna encourage the architect to strive for.
I agree. There is a little bit of room in the zoning back there. I, I took a look at the calculation for it, like. It could get bigger and again, this goes back to the same issue, we're adding cost versus taking out cost, but I, I don't know that. Two hundred and thirty square foot really helps at all for that kind of a function, but. There is that more zoning room and I, I'm, I'm feeling like it's just too much of an uphill battle. I, I don't love that back addition at all, it's, it's ugly. It's got cracks in the foundation, but I feel like it's such an uphill battle to try to look at saving and I think we gotta look at, um. Myself included, just finding ways to cut costs on, you know, we're right sizing our cost and being reasonable about what we do in the back there. And maybe that's the way to do it. I, I wonder if we shouldn't just tell them, um, look at this, but have your estimators like. Don't give us your ultra conservative numbers, but break down different components of it, like what's needed on the outside of the site, that's gonna be kind of a given, all the. Accessible walkways, the lighting, the landscaping and so forth. Um, what is that gonna cost and what's gonna, what's it gonna take? Cause they. They did a really light look at what this building is, they didn't see anything in their report about how they're insulating this, what the AV is or anything else. So it'd be good to get more detail of like what, what all is really intended for the historic structure. If you add those two and it kinda see where you are, then I think we might be able to. Say, well, you know, build us a thousand square foot addition and hold it no more than six hundred dollars a square foot or. And it's something that's determined to be reasonable, so it's not so open-ended, cause I think when it was open-ended, we got the big gables and. You know, a thousand dollars a square foot, so.
Hold that thought, I think it's within the, within the confines of the consensus that was, was developing.
So let's get a motion.
Uh, let's just ask, Stephen, you've been very patient, do you have any observations to add? Thank you. Just identify yourself.
I, I, Steve Welker, ten seven five Waimas Street. Uh, Jack, Jack Stone was my son, I did, I did just wanna echo basically everything he said, but very, very fast. Um, so I, as you know, President of the Association, um, we do. Many events here including Town Dinner, the nominations made candidates for our election night reception, which we revived this past year. Uh, we did wine tasting here one year, we tried to do the newcomers welcome here, um, we did our first inaugural Brew Fest here. And we are so excited for uh, the planned renovation, the plan to have that space for children in the back. Because certainly we've observed things like Town Dinner have become a little unruly and almost impossible to keep some of the old traditions of. Telling stories in a, in a quiet moment at the end of a town dinner. It doesn't happen anymore because the kids are really all running around, so. We're just really, really jazzed about, about plans and we would commit certainly, or certainly as, as long as I'm in the C A or. Just, you know, resident, we wanna use the space, we wanna use it more, we wanna, we wanna see, we wanna be inspired. And, you know, I mean, it, it's clear you guys are being very responsible stewards with the town money and it, so I appreciate the thought. On both sides on what to do, whether renovate or tear down. But yeah, just, I wanna echo the idea of what could be, it would be used more, I hope. And that's really all I have to say, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I, I, yes, if we, could we formulate a motion to get it on the floor for. Our final more formal discussion.
Could we, could we have a motion that recognizes that we would like to have something, a version of option four? But which has a, a bit more attention to cost reduction as that, as is reasonable. Um, given that we, we want to have a, an imaginative space. And one that inspires the community, but also one that fits the budget.
Uh, may I ask a question of Barb before we go to the motion? Um, say we make a motion tonight that we're um, directing to create a scope for the next. Phase of construction drawings for Weederman, um, what information do you need from us in terms of specifications? Um, to be able to do that, say before December, December's meeting?
I mean, I think what Todd just said sort of provides the, the general. Direction, I would imagine, and I haven't talked to Greg about this, obviously, but. That part of this discussion may be that the, the scope of work for the contract involves sort of a front-end consultation with. The mayor and the town council to sort of talk about any ideas you have, give, you know, give you all a chance to sort of talk about this on the front end. Before Greg kinda goes to town, working on the drawings.
Could help a lot, cause I think he just went a little bit more to his personal preference too much, it could help to get a little bit more feedback and then let him know that. We were looking to kind of be a little bit um, judicious on cost, but then say, don't, don't worry about following that footprint if it does help. On that angle, don't deviate from it just for the sake of it, but if a different layout becomes more economically sensible. Um, to get you good space with, you know, a, a simpler structure is really what might be on offer.
Yeah, and I think something I would just encourage everyone to keep in mind is, um. The RFP that was issued sort of reflected what you all wanted to explore. Back from August of twenty twenty-two and it was quite an exhaustive list at the time.
Bigger budget that was being considered.
Uh, there really wasn't much talk of money, it was more kind of, let's explore a bunch of ideas and, yeah, and work back from there. So I think now that you have some sense of, you know, what this might cost and certainly I think. You know, there's no huge funding sources out there, um, beyond what we're, we've already explored, so.
We tried to get small, medium and large kind of scopes to kinda see where it all shook out and it just kinda, everybody got sticker shock, cause the small became like a. Large and then an extra large and an extra, extra large and budget and we've been trying to get it to work.
Yeah, a lot of the specific elements, you know, just not to belabor this, but was sort of stay within the existing footprint and sort of dress up the building. But then they were specifically required to basically talk about ripping off the front addition, ripping off the rear addition and those were all. Prescriptive things and I think now that you've had a chance to really talk about it, you can provide probably more insightful feedback to Weederman now that. You've had the chance to sort of explore all the other things, so that would be my suggestion, Jerry Lee, is just to make that kind of initial. You probably have a work session or something where you just sit around, you know, Greg and his team. And sort of kick around some of these ideas, get his reaction and just sort of have an interactive discussion before they start putting. You know, start working in the CAD drawings.
Okay, so would the, the motion then be that we um, are directing you to um. Put together a um, contract with Weederman to, based on an initial consultation with the mayor and town council. Develop the next phase of construction drawings.
Yeah, I think.
That that consultation is based on us giving direction about looking for economies.
Can we also, since we agree here tonight, can we say that, you know, with an eye towards. Option four, but in a, in a, a more economical version of option four, can we be that specific in that way?
I don't think we wanna backtrack on like the front addition, cause that was his suggestion before, if you wanna cut cost, he was saying just retool this bathroom and then build it.
Yeah, I think, I think that would put our grant funding at risk.
Yeah, that would run the risk out, yeah.
We should stay with that.
Yeah, and it's, it's tough with information around this town, because I think there were a fair amount of people that were wondering why we didn't move with the twenty thirteen plan, but. What that would have meant was putting a new bathroom in the piano room here, um, so it's kinda like, I think we, we made a lot of great ground, like. Um, everything from the stage forward on doing this right out here, so it's a matter of like, can we get, get the rest of it, right?
Yeah, I mean.
I second Jerry Lee's motion.
All right, and the motion is to authorize uh, the town manager to. Enter into negotiations with Weederman to have a further construction contract uh, that we would. If, accept at the December meeting and it will, yes.
Parted from option four in a more economical.
Yes.
Uh, with, with economic considerations.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think you might wanna include in your motion, cause a specific next stage of design is referred to as design development phase, so. I think what you want is a proposal from Weederman for design development phase, largely based on the parameters of option four, but with an eye to. Cutting costs.
Oh, we can't really do that, this, this is a concept, so the next phase would be a schematic.
Um, Greg referred to it as design development in my conversations with him.
That's incorrect. Um, so, and this is like maybe a ten percent drawing, so a schematic gets you up to like thirty-five. A, a design development gets you up to like sixty, sixty-five percent.
He had said it would be essentially a fifty percent complete construction documents is what is the information that has been shared previously and is in your packet tonight.
Yeah, they, they would be jumping ahead too far by him, like you would have, you know, too many decisions made where I think what we're looking for is a. Correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking for something that gives them more freedom to reassess this concept and then land it as a schematic drawing. Um, I don't know if we should move to, design development is really saying you're, you're deciding on what the design is, then it's a matter of just drawing. Permit level detailing of it, so it's, the design is committed, it's the design development.
It, it, isn't, we're ultimately looking for design development, right? And um, that doesn't mean that there wouldn't be interim steps and to me, I'm assuming that that schematic work would be. Just like the consultation, one of the interim steps that gets us to that outcome of the design development.
Yes, but I mean, there's, there's literal terms in the way these things are done where it's, you're starting to relate zero percent and then you work up through concept as maybe ten, fifteen percent. Schematic is like thirty, thirty-five percent, design development is like sixty, sixty-five percent, so what I'm suggesting is he. Re-look, re-look at it at this ten to fifteen percent stage and get us something that we can land at like a thirty-five percent stage, then you would.
Will that be sufficient for a more precise estimate of cost?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, you get the most. I mean, you get the most, much more at six, but it wouldn't be that much difference.
I don't want to get bogged down in semantics.
Yeah, let's take a general concept that gets them the direction they need to keep, keep going.
That's the schematic because, because the schematic, it's kind of like you're, you're paying for it in tranches. So like you're, they, they're designed services. You're, they're charging you a third to get a third of the way, and they're charging you two thirds to get two thirds of the way. We could certainly say move to two thirds of the way, but that's usually after you've made decisions at that one third point. It seems unusual to, to kind of jump ahead to, to go from like ten to sixty. So that's all I'm saying.
So should we call it the schematic?
Was option four at the 10% level?
Yeah, that's about, this is about a 10% level. Yeah. At that.
Well, I mean, to the extent that our motion is to authorize Barb to enter into negotiations with Weederman for a contract to develop the next phase. I mean, I think that's part of, part of the negotiation because it may be that Weederman in his conversation with Barb wasn't aware of the kind of changes we're talking about either and fully understanding.
Yeah, Greg will know that. He'll, he'll be able to suggest a contract that, that gets us what we, what we need to, to get the approvals around town. So get the review and approvals. So.
So there's the motion.
And it's seconded, but and it also includes this idea of a consultation with the mayor and the council.
Yeah, it's a great idea from Barb. Yeah.
Okay.
Right. To make sure that he's not working blind.
So the, so the, the motion is that we enter into the next stage of negotiations with Weederman and that we seek a document, a, a negotiation based on option, on a economical version of option four that includes consultation with the mayor and the council in order to establish the parameters of the next stage of development.
Yeah. Yeah. It's something we can get an estimate on. Yeah.
Yes. Barb, do you have sufficient guidance?
I think so.
All right. Can we vote? Or I'm sorry.
We can vote if there's, we can vote if there's no further discussion.
Just before my vote, I'll make a comment. I'm, I'm fine with moving forward with new construction as long as I don't, I feel like irresponsible to the town if we just spend it all here and don't. I would be really disappointed if we don't make meaningful progress on the parks and we have a fancy bathroom and a fancy kitchen back here. I just want everything to be good. So I, I'm going to be very reluctant to support if the budget keeps hovering around three million dollars and I'd be reluctant to support it. I may be one against four on the council, but I just feel like that's not a good deal for the town.
All right.
I vote yes after that.
I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Unanimous. Thank you very much. I will observe that as long as I'm a mayor and live adjacent to a park, we will not be stripping the park budget to provide a fancy bathroom here. I will also, however, also observe that in preparation for tonight, I went back to review some of the documents. Some folks can argue that this actually began in twenty fifteen. I, I tend to think it was twenty eighteen, which is still a fair while back. Stephen prepared the single most useful document I've seen in fifteen years as an elected official in this town to start off this round. And I urge it upon you, the comments that came in on that document in twenty eighteen and the comments that came in in twenty twenty-three on a second round are almost identical. The, the, the themes, the, the suggestions are, there's a through thread here and if it helps you to understand what residents of this town want out of town hall and have and have been on record for a long time. Just review those documents. You don't have to do line by line, but.
And the current one is good, too. And which is the one that we, the memo, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Stephen's mess.
Thank you for your service.
Okay.
Agreed.
Masonry wall at the pool property.
I guess I. Barb, did you want to talk to that?
Sure. Yes. So this issue, this issue has been talked about on and off for over a year. The most recent discussion took place last month and the town council talked about a specific repair approach. At the end of that discussion, there was no decision was, that was made. I was asked to share a copy of the proposed repair methodology with the chair of our historic preservation committee, Mr. Mizuguchi, who's in attendance. You had wanted confirmation from Clark Azar whether there was any linkage between how the masonry wall gets repaired and any possible future enhancements to the old tennis court slash dog park property. And there had been some discussion about having Clark Azar prepare a three D rendering of the view from the pool deck. Once that cost was known, the town council decided not to move forward with the three D rendering. So as requested, I did share a copy of the sketch plan with Mr. Mizuguchi, who's in attendance tonight. Included in your agenda packet as attachment two is a letter from Jason Azar, Clark Azar, addressing the masonry wall repair. And whether there's any linkage to what eventually happened to the old tennis court, dog park property. We also facilitated a site visit that took place with Mr. Mizuguchi, Donna Caljon from the Garrett Parks Swimming Association and representing the town were our assistant town manager, Kayla Bucher and George Miller. This was basically to go over their proposed repair approach and to get their feedback. During that site visit, Mr. Miller did bring up a possible repair option that had not been discussed previously internally. In a nutshell, it would entail repointing the existing stone, shoring up the wall from behind its face. Essentially holes would be drilled into the wall and there would be rods inserted going from front to back to anchor it to a point beyond the wall. He had shared with Mr. Mizuguchi and Ms. Caljon that it's kind of a tieback, which is referred to as a metal star bolt. There's a representation of what that looks like in your agenda packet. And I did discuss Mr. Miller's idea with Jason Azar after that site visit and Mr. Azar indicated that he does believe that approach could be workable. His recommendation is if you choose to go forward with that option that, that rather than have his firm try to detail everything out, that the town retain a qualified mason and basically sort of have an interactive discussion about what we're trying to accomplish and to basically work with that mason to effectuate the repair. So both Ms. Caljon and Mr. Mizuguchi have both provided letters sharing the perspective of their respective organizations in the wake of the site visit. Those letters are also provided in your agenda packet. So the pool wall repair was initially funded at thirty-five thousand dollars. As she probably noted when we were talking about status of the ARPA funding, we have used a small portion of that money for services provided by Clark Azar. This is an ARPA funded project. My assessment at this juncture, it's highly unlikely that the town could obligate these funds by the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four deadline. Having said that, as I mentioned, I think the lighting on Waverly is probably going to exceed what we budgeted for. So I think these funds could be easily applied to either that project or some alternative projects by the December thirty-first deadline. Thank, like I say, Mr. Mizuguchi is here. If, if there's any questions for him. I don't really have much more to, to add beyond what I just said.
So I would like to propose that we go forward with the plan of using quote unquote star bolts in repointing of the brick to allow reasonable amount of the structure to still be seen and retain its historic value. Instead of the proposal, which is on the larger sheets of installing a giant wooden wall, the block off most of it with maybe an edge visible.
I, I have one question. When I read the report from the historic preservation committee from Mr. Mizuguchi and then I read the letter from the pool board chair, there seemed to be a slight difference in description. I mean, they both were describing a consensus of a more simple approach, something along the lines of what George Miller proposed. But it seemed like the pool board chair mentioned a lot more wood or other natural materials either on top of or on the sides. That was a little unclear to me whether that was consistent with the historic preservation committee's recommendations. So I just wanted to explore that a bit and understand that better before we commit to something. I, I don't know. Maybe that's a question for, for Brian.
Yeah, Brian, if you could, I mean, my, my understanding is that historic preservation was recommending basically kind of repairing the masonry, but you certainly know, Brian, which, what your group would like to do.
Chair of the historic preservation committee. I visited the pool with Dana and George Miller and Donna Caljon November first. And I'm only now looking back at Donna's letter because while, I mean, in a nutshell, while I was there, it's actually very valuable, I think, by many town members and, and full members. It's one of the last vestiges of the town's ties to the B N L. And it's pleasant to have a stone wall. It reminds me of friendly walls you see in the hospitals. And so I asked a question, having seen the drawings black and all tracks would walk completely obscured and be topped by black metal piping, which is pretty inspiring. Whether it's really, why is it necessary to, you know, tear down this wall, cover it up? And nobody identified a reason why it was necessary to wrap a wooden track's wall in front of it and put in this black piping. So I said, well, it can't be just, you know, repairing the wall and shore it up. And George Miller pointed out that there were these solutions succeeding towards town, these old foundation walls. I mean, planted, you grill a one inch hole into the wall, slip it broad and through that anchoring alignment of the yard. And in front of the walls retained something like that, a river star that is attached to Barbara. So, no. So that seemed like both a historic, defensive solution, one that preserves a wall value, but visual appearance makes it a little neat. And you can conserve the town's resources because it's got to be much more less expensive to simply repoint and shore up that wall than to remove parts of it and construct a new wall and try to make out tracks and, you know, piping and reland speed. So for a lot of reasons, it seemed that simply repairing and reserving the wall we have is the best solution for all stakeholders. And I did not, to, I did not sense any difference of opinion from Donna while she was there. She heard the exact same thing I just described to you.
That, yeah.
Take that to the pool. And I interpreted the vocal words letter as, as, you know, being in agreement.
I'll, I'll read the sentence that I was concerned about. It says, remove crumbling top edge bricks and reinforce the top and sides of the wall with timbers or other natural materials. So that was what I was trying to understand whether that was consistent with the historic preservation committee's recommendation.
Well, it, the wall is capped with what might be not so old bricks, but in some places are loose. And so as I read that sentence, it says, and reinforce the top and sides with timbers or other natural materials. I mean, I don't think that's talking about constructing new wood wall. That's talking about shoring up the existing stone.
But it does say reinforce the top and sides of the wall with timbers or other natural materials. So that's the part that I'm trying to A envision and B understand if it's consistent.
It'd be a shame to obscure it with timber. It kind of defeats the purpose. So.
Right.
Seeing it a little bit for history, like I've been curious, just as we discussed this, like how how much of the wall would it be important to see? Because why they're drawing that railing, the reason they're drawing that railing on there is if you have a thirty inch drop or more, then you have to have a guard rail.
Yeah.
And the taller that wall is, the more they have to shore it up. So I'm wondering, is it the kind of thing where, you know, maybe it's acceptable to see like a foot or foot and a half. You might need very little retaining. You may not even need the tie rods for that. And if it's determined that the, that's why I gave Barb the other consultant hopefully they can look at it and try to find out. Like if they find out that those bricks that we assume are run up, assume, but we guess are not really little bricks. They might've been put on in the fifties. You know, you could replace those if they're not original. It could be replaced with concrete or something else. So you know, perhaps you see like a shorter section of the old wall, you see something that stabilizes it above and the grass behind it. And you get rid of the need for a railing. It could be kind of just a lot more simpler, just the.
Yeah.
And there.
See it's about four feet high.
Isn't that high?
And I actually sent a picture and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two and a half.
I mean, you can see that four feet of the wall.
Okay.
One or two layers of bricks, sometimes red as well.
Yeah, it's like this much, right?
No, in fact, I would say it's like.
Oh, two courses. Yeah. Okay.
In some places below that is gray, maybe they were originally bricks, but now they look like gray. You know, like you see walls in, in hospitals that are kind of gray.
It's cheaper.
Not. It's stone. It probably might've been very, very old, but it's aged to the point where it's like a stone.
Yes, falling apart.
And in some places, but it can be shorter. And it'd be a shame to kind of.
So what if, what if we just maybe give less regard to the part of the pool letter that says timber or other and just say reinforce the top and size of the wall with natural materials, which could be any natural materials.
Sure. Or reinforce the, I mean, I think, you know, I'm talking with, my takeaway from talking with George Miller and what I have seen towards town is those are tiny, almost out of timber or something. They're pointing at the stone and they use the anchoring bolt to tie it down at the back. And somehow those small decorative caps like the stars are enough to hold the newly appointed wall in place.
I mean, we could always still build a railing if necessary that would be separate from this thing in front of behind it, behind it. So basically you couldn't walk with standing on top of the brick would be. Well, I would think you could do something like that and that, that would still allow you to have a railing, but on the other hand, it wouldn't impact the brick because it would have its own.
Yeah, there's definitely some code compliance issues, including the other side in terms of those, those ropes do not meet code. I was also going to mention at the last meeting, and I, I really haven't, I haven't had a chance to share it with Stephen. I don't think he was copied on it, but Stephen had followed up with Bell Architects, had a discussion with them. They did send a proposal that covered a couple of different items. One was a condition assessment. Their team would investigate the conditions of the structure through visual means and compile or provide a report documenting their fighting findings and recommendations for actions to be taken to address the identified deficiencies. That had a cost of about forty-seven hundred dollars and then they had some concept drawings and some renderings. If, if all of these things were done, it came in about a little, almost thirteen thousand, four hundred dollars. I think since we're not, not trying to get you not to make decisions tonight, that's not something I typically do. But because I think there was an acknowledgement that this is not going to be an ARPA funded project. If this is something that you want us to go back to Donna and clarify and put this on your next meeting agenda, just so we're clear on what she meant by the statement Jerry Lee read, we can, we can certainly defer this to December if that's something you want to do. And in the interim, I can also share this proposal from Bell Architects.
Well.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to ask, I mean, Stephen, do you think, given where we are now with the, the historic preservation committee's recommendation, the pool boards committee, do we really at this point need to? need to invest the $13,000? I think that's what I heard in um, this additional historic preservation assessment.
Maybe not all of it, but we haven't had anybody really with qualifications look at the brick to, to see what's, what's really historic and what's not. Um, so I could help.
Yeah, exactly. And what do we get out of it?
To find out, just to verify that you would take off the reddish bricks on the top and then you may or may not put back bricks, you may, you might be able to put back just a concrete ring that would make it more stable. And then you could do something that's kind of like this, where the, if the wall is kind of tall and it comes down to like where the pool deck is, and right now the earth slips up to a wall and I guess Brian, you're saying it's like four feet ish tall now. If you do a concrete, yes, if you do a concrete wall over here that's tall enough that you could sit on around the edge of the pool deck, then that raises your soil start point up. Like a foot and a half, you add in another foot and a half of soil, you would still be able to see as much as the wall you can while staying under the um, the dimension where you would need that guard rail up above the top, you could still have it as an exhibit spot, you know, where you would see some of that old brick, you know, maybe a foot or two. Um, do whatever it needs to be done to stabilize that on the top, put in some bushes and then you're, you're kind of done. It's a simpler thing. I don't think you would even need the tie rods. And if you do, then um, just do those. But I, I think right now we have, we don't really have any like real engineering on it. Um, it's just kind of supposition that something in Georgetown works for what was a foundation for a tank that would have been underground. So.
Well, um, I think they would object covering out all the foot of the wall. It'd be in the center and there's about four feet of wall exposed. It's only in the edges where there's maybe two feet of wall. It tapers down, visible part tapers down to about one or two feet.
Yeah.
But in the center of the curve, it's about four feet accessible. And it's set back far enough in the pool, but I don't understand why you would contemplate that as a source of seating. It's pretty far back.
I'm not saying sit on the top of the tank wall. I'm saying you would put, um, right now you have the wooden benches where all the swimmers line up on the, they're on the, on the, yeah, on the south side of this.
It doesn't, that area doesn't
I'm no, but, but I'm saying you could have, and that the pool was doing more bench.
I think
They were before.
I think trying to resolve this offsite has its challenges. What I, what I don't hear is any suggestion that we need to deal with this, this month or next. And I suggest since next month is going to have a very full agenda, that we defer this until January. Consult with the Pool Board to remove any ambiguities because I see the same ones in their letter. And, and go from there.
Do we want to hire the consultant or at least the initial round of consulting or no?
I, I don't think so.
Just hold on.
Okay.
Yeah, I would definitely hold on that. I would
I just wanted to ask.
Is it possible for me to get in there and take a look at this? I mean, I haven't seen it um, being four feet, so I'd like to go back and take a look at it.
Sure.
Just tell me why.
Offense after midnight, you'll be
No, tell me why I could get you in there. No problem.
For it's standing up, long time member of the pool. So I have, I think I've heard the sentence under the bullet points about removing the top edge bricks. And so this approach of who is building a large retaining wall benches or any extensive excavation of the construction. I think it's pretty, I mean, my take away, but it's the pool. I'm the same patient.
Same here.
You know, it's an elegant solution to preserve this at a cost of heck a lot less than constructing new walls and benches and excavator. And, and if you do that, anything you construct in front of it, not with a pyramid of spirit. Um, but it's now, that's a stone wall.
If, if that's the case, can we just decide this tonight? I mean.
I'd, I'd rather look at it and then decide it like in January, but I guess just it's important to remember that the tricky part of this is if you do expose all four feet of that wall, then you have to have the guard rail on the top. So it could be a different look, but that's a code.
Code is 30, code is 30 inches.
Yeah. You can't have a problem.
The out of compliance, is that what we're saying? The current exposed four feet?
Yeah, it's out of compliance.
Can you put bushes on top of it or does bushes not count as sufficient barrier?
I I'm not sure that constitutes this, as I understand it, Phil, I'm not sure it constitutes a sufficient barrier because it's essentially intended to prevent someone from falling. So I guess it depends what kind of bushes we're talking about, but typically it's something more substantial than that is my understanding.
Usually you get people up there congregating like for the pool meets and stuff too. So they're gonna find themselves pushing towards the edge. And it kind of, it's, that's kind of a little surprising that we have rope railings around the other side.
So if we're going to defer this to January, then I would move to table the discussion. Thank you. Second?
Brian, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll set that aside.
But also in favor of giving Stephen a chance to go visit the hills?
Lighting project. Barbara, do you want to give us some?
Sure. And then I'll turn it over to Phil. So um, this item also has a fairly long history, um, going back to roughly May of 2023. Um, kind of, I won't, in the interest of time, I won't go through it, but you've had a series of discussions at which various decisions were made. I had indicated in the agenda packet, um, some things that we came back um, from traffic systems. I know Phil actually has um, some, some different things that he and I talked about um, a little bit after five today. So in, at your place, um, at the tables, there's a document that shows a light pole as, as the first part of it. Um, and I would probably suggest maybe kind of Phil walk through this before doing so. Um, as I mentioned earlier, when we were talking about the ARPA funding, um, I, I think it's just, it's very difficult for staff to write specs for many, much of the work that has to be done to make this project a reality. So as I mentioned earlier, um, I had talked to Phil about the town working with Traffic Systems Inc. They are our vendor for the lighting on Strathmore. Um, basically they're sort of a fairly comprehensive lighting company in terms of their ability to do electrical work or concrete bases for light poles. So I think that is just a procurement aspect of this discussion that I did want to highlight for you all. Um, just to make sure you're, you're comfortable with that approach. Um, based on my conversation with Phil after five, I would ignore all the light fixtures that are actually in the agenda packet and refer to the document that was passed out tonight and would suggest that um, Phil just sort of walk through those. My hope once again is that um, you all can sort of settle on a, a light pole and a light fixture. Um, that will allow us to move to the next stage of photometric work to figure out exactly how many fixtures are needed because that's obviously a kind of a critical part of the cost component here.
So after talking with the Historic Preservation Committee, I came out of that meeting with some rather um, solid directions as to what they would expect to see. And basically that was something is be very similar to what's on Strathmore. Um, but it's going to be shorter, shorter to the lower to the ground. Um, so to that end, I then took uh, and did some research and wrote up a specification for what those poles and fixtures needed to be. From that point, um, I submitted it to Barb. She in turn gave it to um, the traffic folks that we're talking about, the contractor we're talking about. They came back with some, with a couple of proposals, which you'll see on the, essentially the third page. And these are just the fixtures of the third page of your initial packet. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure where the first two ones came from because those are pendants or a hang down light. So that
They, they sent those when I asked Phil if um, they had any HADCO options. HADCO is the maker of the poles on Strathmore. They just sent those and George and I thought we'd throw them out there if anybody was interested.
I, I already gone through that with, with Historic Preservation. So that one went on the table months ago. Uh, the others, in order to make it look like the ones that were on Strathmore, that means it would have to be a hex side or eight sided fixture with eight uprights um, on it. In addition, we wanted to have zero uplight to make it dark sky friendly, change the color temperature to make it dark sky friendly. These two, um, while they may be somewhat dark sky friendly, certainly do not look anything like what I see on Strathmore. And there's some other stuff that they don't really meet in terms of the specification that I had drawn up. So I had already looked at, um, and I should quick address the pole on the back. The pole on the back is um, essentially, I believe a HADCO pole, which is essentially what is the same thing that we have out here.
Right. It's the Strathmore pole, but two feet shorter.
Right. So
More than 10 foot or 12 foot pole and the light is like another two feet.
Two feet. Well, actually, yeah, two and a half. So um, I agreed with, I agree with the pole, although I didn't get a lot of specs on it. To help speed things along, I had already done research and I just basically put it all together. Um, and came up with all the, the two vendors that I believe will be able to supply what we need that's compliant. And uh, also supply the poles. And I put all that together so that based on what happens tonight, we can go to the um, contractor and say, here, bid these out and let's see what we get for costs and then we can make a decision. So beginning with probably the easiest part, what I've got on this sheet here, we'll start with the poles and I start with the poles because they basically look the same as Strathmore. I mean, they're as close as I could get to Strathmore. The only real difference between them is one is cast iron. Uh, one is aluminum. Now, the cast iron one, the interesting thing about a cast iron one is that they give you a 25 year warranty, including road hazard. In other words, if a car hits a thing, um, the car will get dented and not the pole. So I don't know how much more it'll cost, but nevertheless, I, I threw it in there. But as you can see, they're both the same. Um, they're supposed to be a tapered 12 fluted pole, painted RAL 6009 green. You know, it's all the same. So it'll look, smell, feel the same as the other one, just shorter. Uh, one difference was I put in a junction box or a electric box up towards the top that would allow us to, uh, if we wanted to someday uh, plug in say holiday decorations or something like that, if we ever felt the need. Because they have to essentially weld that onto the pole. So it's like, try and get that done up front. That way, if we want it, we can use it. If we never use it, we don't use it. Um, the second thing with the poles was I have an option later on, we'll discuss, but basically um, if we wanted to use, depending on the cost of it, occupancy sensor. So in other words, if somebody's walking on the sidewalk, the lights would be up to a brighter stage, but if there's nobody there, you know, in the middle of the night, they'll drop down to a dim. That way it saves the energy, it looks a little bit better at nighttime, stuff like that. So what I'm asking for here for both this and for the fixtures, which I'll get to in a second, is that you approve this base, you approve uh, me looking at this stuff based on what's presented. And then between Barb and I and George, whoever will uh, make a decision once we get in the bids to figure out exactly which ones we're going to order. But as you'll see, I've tried to make everything look the same. Um, the pole, the third pole is actually the, the last one on the first line. It's called FTJ, but it looks the same as the others. You shouldn't, there's really no difference. So pole wise, I think it's pretty easy. I'm going to, depending on cost, pick one of the three poles and that's the pole that we'll use.
Well, let's in, in um, in concept, I think that's a good approach, but I think we can, unless you need greater flexibility, I think we can indicate now. I would certainly favor the Washington hole over the Capistrano.
Sure. I mean, there's a slight difference, but they're basically the same, but that's fine with me.
Capistrano is, is aluminum and
The Washington can be aluminum.
Can be aluminum or cast.
Correct.
Yeah. Um, so do we have consensus on that? We're looking at Washington or something substantially similar and not Capistrano? Why not Capistrano?
Capistrano is what we have now.
On Strathmore?
No, Washington is.
Does it have, I don't think it's got maybe
No, that's Square ornamentation on the bottom of Capistrano.
We don't have a little brief, brief key column, brief key or whatever that is.
At the very bottom.
Okay, I see what you mean. Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
Uh, so we have the Washington?
So I'll do okay, get rid of that. Um, then how about the FTJ on um, the next page? It's the first one, uh, last one in the first row.
Well,
The same thing, it's not
It is the same thing, different manufacturer.
Yeah.
Sure, it's the same.
So if we're okay, then that would be either one of those.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Aluminum and green, right?
Right.
With respect to the um, add-on light out, uh, electrical outlet, I think unless it's very expensive, I would assume we'd all uh, be fine with that.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just find out.
Mike, right?
Yeah, can I be nice to President?
Well, I will. Yeah, I'll have to.
The subtle occupancy center sensor um, sounds good, but a lot depends on how it's set. Otherwise you get a sort of a flashing sensation.
Yes.
As people go by, cars go by, what have you. Um,
Dear.
Dear.
Three bright.
Especially deer at three in the morning.
Um, that was basically, I'm just bringing it up as something, um, it may be cost prohibitive. So I just wanted to bring it up as something we could do. I'd have to look more into it, the exact system. But first I wanted to bring it up to say this is something that um, we can look into.
Are you going to be able to pursue this to the point where we can authorize a contract at the next meeting?
Yes.
That's the
Yeah, I, I was going to bring up the same point. Um, your meeting is on, I believe it's December 8th or 9th. So we're talking about less than 30 days. So I would really encourage you all to try to streamline this as much as possible because I not only need to get pricing for the pole and the fixtures, get photometrics run, get cost for concrete basis, which is once again contingent on the number of the poles. So there's not very much time left.
I mean, I've got all this, the stuff that we see here, I had already distilled into a note. There's only one thing on that note I'll need to change to send an update, which is going to be remove the Capistrano so far.
Okay.
Find, find out what the cost of occupancy?
Yeah. And that's actually considered an option. So it'll be, I wanted it quoted separately as an option.
Is try to find out what the, I'm not going to use the right term of art, but the interval is
Yeah.
Between the time it turns on and turns off in the absence of any other activity.
True.
And we may want to do a quick and dirty informal survey of the neighbors. Because that's the kind of thing that sounds good, but might be irritating if it doesn't work the way we think it does.
Yeah, um, I'm going to first start by trying to get the cost because if it's super expensive, then it's, it's out. Um, but yes, good points.
We can do our um, ARPA funding around that being an option that's out of the money anyway, right? So let's just figure out what's happening in the light.
Yeah. I mean, I think part of this depends on how I define the project because once again, if the entire project is not funded with ARPA funds, it triggers, as I understand it, and I can check with. It, it may trigger federal prevailing wage laws, which is going to jack up the cost of the labor considerably. So um, once again, I think the more that we can keep the option somewhat confined and not trigger federal prevailing wage, that would be helpful.
Okay, we just go with the regular light then and experiment with that.
Well,
See somewhere else.
The reason that I brought that up is because um, the pole um, the pole would have to be modified with a little piece on it to hold the occupancy sensor. But again, I believe first we need to figure, I need to see what the cost is. If the cost is too high, it's just, it's not even, it's done. The next portion of it are three different fixtures or luminaires. Um, one's made by Hallifane and again, it, it, the biggest thing with the Hallifane one is if you look at the second page, you'll see um, at the bottom, there's a no finial option and that would be the one that we'd be looking at. So we wouldn't have the finial, but it would basically look like the, the black and white picture on the front page. It would as closely as possible match what we've got. Based on all the dozens of light fixtures I've looked at, this is probably one of the best matches that meets all of our requirements. But at the same time, um, looks like something on Strathmore. The next two pages show two, uh, is a different company and they showed two different versions of it. One is a short squat version, one's a taller version. Uh, the finials I am sure can be removed because the people who make these cast them in their own foundry. So I don't see why they couldn't remove the finials and that's what I had requested in the documents that I had sent over to Barb. But I wanted to see if there was any comment one way or the other to either the shorter version or the taller version, they're different. Um, by about seven inches. And the width is, um, basically the same, it's a quarter inch difference, so it's not.
May I just ask, was the historic preservation committee specifically against adding a finial? I realize that the Strathmore Avenue ones don't have a finial, but it's not like they're historic light fixtures. I was just curious.
I don't recall, do you recall?
Collectively against finials for a good, for any particular reason.
Yeah, please. I mean, I was basically under the impression, make it look like Strathmore, so that's why I.
Yeah, but, um, the, this is the light that I think we settled on. It has no finial.
Right.
And I thought that was.
That was not.
In July.
It wasn't the one that's going to work. It can't because it's not, it's not hex. It doesn't meet all the requirements. Um, no, as a matter of fact, I thought I sent an email to Nancy basically saying that that one wouldn't work.
So we're trying to get as close to that as we can.
We're trying, we're trying to get as close to the ones in Strathmore as possible. It's a six sided one. These are eight sided ones.
That's one attached to the, um, to, I believe to the, um, package for tonight that will circulate into the public, so I wasn't.
Yeah, I just, I just sorry to say, I just put these out there, but I can give you my copy.
Is it vital to be a hex if it's going to be a smaller light? Versus a octagon or?
Well, again, it got down to making it look like Strathmore and these that one or flip to the page, the other two pages.
Well, it, it does seem like we're so close that if we could, you know, um, authorize Barb working with, um, the Phil and the mayor and, and the historic preservation committee, you know, to we're looking for meeting the dark sky specifications and the, the look and feel of the Strathmore design and, you know, let's, let's authorize and delegate so that they can just work out the details.
They're all faux Victorian lights.
Right.
They're all the same.
Go ahead.
At my point of time, I would just say that, um, that story for the committee. I get the time in here, I know, but if we were unanimous, they wanted as, as simple, uh, as less fussy a design as possible, so.
Okay, that, that's helpful. So that is specific.
And so that.
It's, yeah, it's just a promise of only, it doesn't meet the uplight and glare and all that stuff. So that one's got, that's what's going to throw it out.
That needs to be totally remember that one block.
Yeah, because we want to try and be environmentally sensitive and we don't want the uplight, especially you don't want it to be cast into some of the houses sitting up on the hill, so.
Also affects life, et cetera.
It does, so.
I think you do that down to replace those side lighting style cover lights that are there.
Well, one would get replaced, yeah. But I mean, if, if I can find one that looks like that one, if that's what you need, but. Even though it's a six sided one.
Not much size, that's the, you know, like, for example, this one's, is what we would have put in the two fussy category. Um, it's less, it looks less fussy than that.
Hmm.
Um, and finials, yeah.
You don't want finials.
We didn't want them, that's why we, in July, um, you know, that's when the lights popped in.
Yeah.
Provided us.
Yeah. Okay, well.
Okay.
Now. Right, but. I'll look for Ali and I've already gone through these things, so I can quick find a La Jolla looking one. If that's, uh.
Oh, they probably make something similar.
They do, I just have to.
Must have a thousand.
Oh, guys. Tons of them and I can go with Spring City, they've got something similar. Um, the biggest thing, the biggest difference I can tell you right now is that they can have glass in them because as soon as you put glass into them, then that, what happens is you now create a lot of uplight and a lot of glare. And that's the biggest difference between these and say glass in these.
Those people.
These are all open. The actual light is up here at the top, very top and shines down. So as soon as you put glass in here, though, that causes the problem.
That's what makes Strathmore probably have so much glare.
Exactly.
Like having a hundred and fifty moons on the street.
Exactly.
Appreciate, you know, what you do within your constraints, or overriding objective was to minimize the multiplication of different lifestyles in China, and that was a big, why we were recommending something that resembled Strathmore because otherwise.
Well, see, that's, and that's where I went because these are based on the Strathmore.
I mean, it was either the teardrop style or the Strathmore style, you know, dominate the lighting and lighting. You know, there's a third, fourth person that starts to look like some discordant array of differing styles. So that was the objective to try to get as close to something that we already got.
And that's what, and that's what I went with, which is why I went with a eight sided. Um, tried to get this type of thing. The only difference is you can't put the glass in it. Obviously the finial is going to be gone, but the idea was to get something as close to Strathmore as I could get that looked. So if you look at this one versus Strathmore one, you should see that they're pretty close. And that's as good as I could get that was Strathmore.
That, that sounds good, thank you.
Okay, okay, so it's the sense of the council that council member Schultz and um, town manager will work uh, to enable us to vote on a contract at the next meeting that would obligate funds for um, lighting in the forty-six hundred blocks.
Yeah, my, my request, if I may, my request would be Phil, that you limit the number of options and I get the specific information you're asking for pricing on. I would just note that we have a holiday. I have family coming in from Colorado, so I will be off um, the week of Thanksgiving as well as the following Monday. So essentially I have this week and next week and probably a couple of days when I come back. Um, if the number of options once again are not finite and the company is not given specific direction that they can come back with pricing, I, I'm, I'm very concerned about the timing and whether or not we can actually have something for you to vote on at the next meeting and I'm not going to pretend otherwise. So Phil, if you can send me what you have, I will do my best to get it done.
When you say finite, how many do you mean?
As limited as possible.
Document that I sent has all this written down and it's all, and I will give you a call tomorrow, send you a text and we can go over it. Um, I believe I've got it all laid out, so it should be very simple for somebody, including the contact information, just to call them up and say, this is what I need.
Yeah, what I'm going to do is basically turn it over. They have a lighting consultant and turn it over to them. Um, and I, I just need to contact traffic systems and see what they can do and how fast they can turn it around.
Yep, I.
Um, because their, their lighting consultant is the one who's going to run the photometrics and they can't do that once again without a specific fixture, so. Um, we'll just do the best we can to bring it in. If it's not ready for your meeting in December, then we will pivot and try to find, um, something else to commit the funds to or um, explore your availability for a special meeting before everyone departs for Christmas.
Okay, let's, yeah, let's talk tomorrow because I mean, if I have to, I'll, I'll get the estimates just so we can.
Might be that the contractor might have known what we're looking for. They might have some suggestions from a manufacturer to say, hey, I got, I know what it does exactly that, so see what they know.
Okay. Do you have anything further on that issue, Barbara? Do you have enough? In the way of marking directions. The next item on the agenda is, uh, discussion. The district not necessarily the introduction of both ordinance and many cuts and regarding access drivers and.
Yeah, so this is, um, yeah, I think we, I think we can, sure, I think we can boil this down, um, fairly easily. So you've had discussions back in June, September and October, um, and the updating of the town code regarding the reimbursement portion, um, and also just formalizing the town's um, specs, which will be done by resolution. Um, I provided in your agenda packet, an updated copy of the ordinance that I believe reflects at least the um, the issues that I believe have been resolved to date. Um, certainly if there's anything you see here that you feel is to the contrary, please let me know. The, the major outstanding issue has to do with the number of allowable curb cuts. Um, as we've talked about previously, um, generally, um, the accepted road standards in most jurisdictions would be that there would be one entrance or curb cut per lot. Um, I've kind of gone over this issue extensively with both, um, the town attorney and the town civil engineer, just to kind of pick their brain for their experience. You know, as trying to come up with standards to respond to the questions that have come up in the prior discussions. Um, I think we've all been a bit stymied by that because in general, um, having more than one curb cut is a function of safety. Um, and that's sort of, when there's, um, more than one curb cut is considered. Um, some of the reasons for that is just basically a loss of street parking and creating more impervious surface. As the ordinance currently is drafted, and that's obviously subject to change at your direction. The draft included in your agenda packet states that the town council may consider approval of a second curb cut, um, for a property with frontage on a street of ninety feet or more on a case by case basis. Um, and the, that consideration of the second entrance would be according to the factors that are in seven twelve, uh, D of the draft ordinance. That's, once again, that's obviously subject to your, um, you know, discretion. There had been some discussion at, I believe it was the September meeting about possibly lowering that ninety feet. Um, the town civil engineer does not recommend that if the goal is to make two curb cuts an exception rather than the rule. Um, so he doesn't recommend lowering that, that width. Certainly, I think the standards that you all wish to consider in terms of whether to grant a second, um, curb cut or not, you can look at what's in seven twelve D. I know some of these are not Phil's favorite factors, particularly number eleven, uh, which is sort of open ended. Um, we also discussed at your last, I think it was, I don't know if it was your last meeting or the one before that, some language that the town attorney had pulled from other codes, which basically talked about, um, you know, approval of a second entrance may be considered by the town council for a property that is either a corner lot or with frontage of a street um, of ninety feet or more on a case by case basis, once again referring back to seven twelve D. Um, there was also some aversion that he provided specifically referencing Strathmore or Knowles. I think one of the challenges that I guess we've had, and when I say staff, I mean the town attorney and the town civil engineer and I is this has been described by you all, um, as being akin to a variance and inherently a variance, since you just considered one of those at your last meeting. A variance somewhat implies, you know, not a preference, but unique factors about that property that trigger special consideration. So it's either um, peculiar, unusual practical difficulties, or that there would be an exceptional or undue hardship on the owner of the property. Um, so we've had some difficulty beyond what would be defined as a safety parameter of defining what would meet that threshold if this is indeed, um, akin to a variance in your mind. So I, I wish we probably had something more specific to offer you this evening, um, but certainly just looking for your direction and we can make whatever changes you would like to the draft ordinance that's included in your agenda packet.
So this will be towards introducing it potentially next, next meeting.
It would not be at your next meeting because I was trying to get as solid a draft as I could, um, that met your expectations before circulating it to the various town committees.
Okay.
Um, so it definitely, I did update the dates to show it would be a twenty, twenty-five ordinance, um.
Got it.
So I think the, the, in my mind, unless you see something else in the draft ordinance, a lot of your discussion this evening probably centers on this curb cut issue that, um, unfortunately we've not been able to provide much guidance off collectively as your staff.
That's helpful to note. It's not like, uh, it's not like this is urgent in any way, so it wants to really have it reviewed.
I, I would note that I probably have received more driveway applications and, uh, since you all started talking about this issue because I think everyone's recognizing that the reimbursement may go away, so we have a, a number of driveway improvements coming our way.
Just one thought, it may or may not matter too much, but like on the circular driveway, I think a fair amount of us, like we picture the, the more picturesque ones around town, like usually here they're, they're kind of cute. They keep the cars off the street. People can easily kind of loop them around. They're not like big, um, you know, big, um, construction pieces. So I, I wonder if, um, if we should keep the door open for those and not worry about it perhaps as much as the town attorney and the engineer are worrying about it. Um, it's, it's not even just the topography that makes it difficult. A fair amount of our houses in town are on fifty foot lots and the house was built over thirty feet wide just because that was before the setbacks really were in place. So there's really no way to get the old traditional, like my house has a driveway that goes around and we park way in the back. Our next door neighbor has a Chevy house, they can't because there's only seven feet, so they actually have to drive onto our property to get to the back. I think that happens a fair amount, so that makes, um, a fair amount of houses, I think where, you know, you, you either have like a little parking pad in the front, which people in the past have opined that doesn't really look that great, or potentially a circular driveway, um, that could be controlled to, to continue to look picturesque.
Yeah, what might be, I mean, just offering this as a suggestion is perhaps you all might wish to look at what is currently listed as potential standards in seven twelve D. Um, there's um, and some of these might need to be, eleven might need to be tweaked. That's the, uh, Phil's favorite provision in the whole thing because it refers to, it has the town manager. So some of these, it, it kind of serves a dual purpose in terms of how does staff go about reviewing just kind of routine applications as this is currently drafted. If you look at, um, seven twelve subsection E. It kind of refers to the same standards that staff would use just for its routine review. So that might be a good starting point for your discussion of just loo- look at what's listed in seven twelve D as considerations that you all. So that might be a good starting point for your discussion of just look at what's listed in seven twelve D as considerations that you all would. Utilize to decide whether or not you would. Grant a second curb cut and see if those meet your expectations or if there's ones that.
How about adding one that's similar to what we currently have for. House related variances. Essentially reflecting unusual. Attributes of the lot such as. Corner lots, lots with varying topography as compared to. The the street level versus the house level. Other and we don't have to even name them. We could just say unusual law attributes, and then that could leave flexibility. For. For the council to consider because a lot of these are quite open ended. If if you know, I I'm with Stephen. I don't. See why I think the town attorney and the. Engineer, I guess, are really thinking about more cookie cutter neighborhoods that are developed all at the same time and all the houses look alike and all the lots look alike. Yeah, it's not Garrett Park.
Yeah, that's one thing I never liked about.
Think it's just sort of like discriminatory towards those with smaller.
Yeah, I mean, I think the the question becomes are these the exception or the rule because. You know, if you all want to. Just grant these as a matter of right, that's certainly within your legislative prerogative to do so.
Well, I I do think we we want to leave some flexibility, but also some discretion to say protect town trees, right? You know, if granting that second curb cut means that. They have to tear down a town tree. We want the discretion to be able to say. No, you have room for a driveway without taking down the town tree.
Do you all, just because I'm thinking about this before I forget, obviously with a variance, you just went through the process. And there was some discussion at your last meeting about. Is something binding, you know, is a decision you make on a variance binding on the next thing? And part of that process was that there's actually. A written order. That basically outlines the factors for your decision. That is not something that is. Currently in this draft. Is that something that you want? As you try to kind of bring this.
Yeah, basically says that this, it says granting of variance. Paraphrasing says granting of a variance does not establish a precedent for any future variances.
Yeah, there's actually, I think your reason for, I think, to somewhat. Avoid creating a precedent is that you're outlining the unique factors of that. Is that something that you not, I'm not saying you should. Is that something that you want to do for these second curb cut situations or?
I would think because you don't want to, I mean, this is just me. I would think that you don't want. You want to consider them on a case by case basis is what I.
That's how this reads currently. You're right.
Although I'd like it, it would be better if it was the exception rather than, you know, the rules if it was more clear. That. They're shopping no more than one curb entrance per lot. With special. You know, dispensation or in certain cases or. In in rare instances or, you know, some language that conditions the second cut.
Agreed. With the exception of anything that's exists. Should be grandfathered in, which I'm not sure I see, but.
I was, if you look at seven twelve C.
C, okay.
Right, notwithstanding the foregoing, I'll need to one of the things that I want to ask Ron about is it says a parking or access facility that does not. Is does he want the specific addresses to be embedded into the ordinance or incorporated by reference somehow? I haven't had that discussion with Ron, but that's on my to do list. Because we do have a list of the addresses.
This is a tricky one though, because we picture. You know, kind of. The good ones that look look just fine, but somebody could come in and say, I have. Three large pickup trucks and I want them all parked in a row and I want. A big loop that's 25 feet wide. You know, it's basically becomes your. Front yard becomes a parking lot, which is something that I believe the. County already prohibits. I think they prohibit having parking pads in your. Front yard.
There are.
They don't enforce it, obviously, because they're all over the place, but.
There are some limits. You're correct, Stephen. I don't remember what it is off the top of my head, but we had a situation, I won't mention the street, but. Where someone it was actually was on your street, Stephen, where someone came in. Obviously, the. The granting of a curb cut is a state function in that case, but there were some concerns about the. The degree of pavement and. The county did mention that their standards, the one on streets such as Strathmore is a little bit different than it would be on another street in Garrett Park. But there are definitely limitations about how much pavement somebody can have.
That might be worth looking into because I think George Martin told me there is there is something literally in the zoning code. About how how much you can put there.
Choice ten nine one nine, Tymon Avenue. Speaking not as the reporter personally. Since the. The issue of seven section seven twelve C was raised. The sentence says, notwithstanding the foregoing, a parking or access facility that does not conform with the specifications of this ordinance. May be maintained, altered, repaired or replaced, provided that nonconformity is not expanded. Does that mean you do not need a permit?
It's an interesting question. There was some discussion, Ken, at the last meeting. Because initially with the discussion about circular driveways, it said they would be permitted and we had started doing some research. As to whether or not all the ones that exist were permitted. At the last meeting, the council had asked that the word permitted be removed. So that the current draft of the ordinance does. Essentially, if something was built without a permit, it would be grandfathered as the ordinance is drafted today.
So you might only be more specific, I would think. If you do not need a permit in those situations. Because it doesn't say that. As a matter of fact, A says. That if you were expand or replace. You do need a permit. So the word replaced is in both A.
And B and C.
And C where you suggest we don't need a permit.
How about if you say may be maintained, altered, repaired, replaced without an additional permit? Without requirement of an additional permit, provided the nonconformity is not expanded.
Well, I, yeah, I think my reading of. Of seven twelve A. Is basically the ones that were not that exist today. That were not permitted would essentially be legitimized by passage of this ordinance is is what the intent of like the language in C is. It's in saying that anything that is not legitimized by section C. Then it would become unlawful under section A. I think that's the intention. Yeah.
Needs to confusion. At least I would think you'd want to say you don't need a permit.
Stand in place without it's just without necessity of an additional permit. That may be my suggestion. As someone who just put in a walkway.
We I I've got. Draft amendments to the code all over the place. One of the things that was discussed back in. I'll probably get my year wrong. I believe it was July of 2023. And I actually, I think this would be a good idea is that anyone. Who wants to do something in the town right of way should at least have to get some sort of approval from the town. Right now, it's sort of a no man's land and then we have people putting things in. We have no idea they went in. Then we're supposed to be in some cases going back to them to say. Well, your plants are too high, rip them out. I I think some of those issues should probably be. The town should maintain some control of its right of way. And I would say right now. There's no review. There's nothing. We just look up one day and something's there. So that's kind of a different issue, but. It's somewhat related to this. I don't know if that would be, that would not, in my opinion, Chris, be considered a parking or access driveway facility. That's. Just a walkway on your property. So generally, parking facilities inherently are going to be a connection to a town street. So I think it's. I think this was originally listed as sidewalk and the town council rightly said that probably was not the right word. So Ron was envisioning. I think a walkway that. May that would cross town right of way, I believe, is what he had in mind.
Yeah, that may need to be made more clear.
Yeah, I mean, walkway may should maybe should be in a different section of the code and not even even in this at all possibly.
Hey, a suggestion for C. If you look at the last line, well, just kind of, it says 2025 may be maintained, altered, repaired or replaced. And between replaced and provided, consider with the proper permits. So it'd be replaced with the proper permits providing the non. I think that would address Ken's point would make it clear that you still need a permit. Right?
Or a replacement.
Consider the power. I have certain driveway. Let's say I want to. I'm repairing.
Right.
In the asphalt. I want to say like the line needs a permit, you know, plug up all in the existing asphalt.
I think that's where, yeah, I understand your point exactly. Right.
Yeah, yeah, the permitting should only be for full replacements, I would think.
Okay, I mean, then you can guard against expansions.
Right.
To get rid of the word repaired. Promise somebody can get, people get tricky with the word repaired. That's where I.
I I think the other part of the discussion you all have had is as people go to, it depends, I think. What part we're talking about. So you all had also. Talked about the standard has been for some years predating my tenure. That aprons, when aprons are touched, they need to be upgraded to the seven inches of concrete. So what is a, what are we repairing and where does it fall? If it's outside of outside of town right of way. Typically, that's not as much our interest as it is if it's the apron and it's in town right of way. So that this would be governed not by this ordinance, but if you recall, you'll be adopting technical specifications by resolution.
So do we need to define repair to Ken's point? I mean, it's a very good point.
Want to take out the place. Does it conflicts with section A or the example you need between A and C? Does they both use the word replace?
Grandfathered that if it is replaced. Using the prior specifications that it would be allowed to do that.
Residents who ask for a permit for a minor job that's being done to repair.
To maintain or repair.
Yeah, I understand.
There's a felt like if you changed yours from stone to asphalt, I guess that would be a permit.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Because it'd be a major alteration, but I think to Ken's point, if you repair a pothole in your driveway. With a bag of cold patch, that shouldn't require a permit.
Get 100 permits out of Jerry Lee if she throws more stones down. Twenty bucks a pop.
There you go.
But isn't our intent that. If they're grandfathered and they generally don't expand. They don't have to go upgrade to the new specifications, even if they're replacing, because they wouldn't be able to meet the the new specifications and keep their. Shape and number of curb cuts. Is that the intent?
That the other part was that we had to do something with ones that may or may not be permitted. So we decided. Last meeting that we would try and grandfather everything in.
Yeah, I think there may be some examples of what's in that was likely not permitted that you might wish to review. Just in looking at some of the photos that the maintenance staff has taken. Is the intention still to say that if someone touches their apron? That has to now be upgraded to seven inches of concrete because that is what we are requiring people without circular driveways to do. And it is what you all said at your one of the last prior discussions. So it's not saying they can't have a circular driveway. It's just saying. What is the apron construction that is in town right of way? So I think this is once again getting to kind of this, what's a repair and where is it occurring? You're right. If it's. Right next, you know, up up top of Ken's driveway and it's putting coal patch in. No, town doesn't care about that. If Ken was doing something with his apron, I would suggest that the town does care based on what we're requiring of other people currently who don't have circular driveways.
Yeah, I think we need to keep it consistent because it's really the stormwater. Issue, the stormwater guiding issue, so. It's just, it's just tricky. The whole thing is tricky because like some of these things, if you say it's grandfathered, then you get a new person moves in and then. They turn their whole front yard into a. Try to turn their whole front yard into a parking lot. So I think we gotta. Have some leeway to have some flexibility to include these circular driveways, but have some guardrails on it, so.
So we, it seems like we achieved that. With the with the exception of the question, what constitutes a repair? Right? So is that and then the other question is the. Topography and sort of when exactly.
Unique, unique attributes of the of the law. So.
Number 12.
Well.
I wonder if it might be interesting to see like if this. Later down the road of when this goes to historic preservation and land use to see whether it makes sense to have any kind of guidance or. Restrict restriction on how much paving you can have. In your front yard. So we can kind of avoid having those like. Parking lot, like you see them all over the place and like Aspen Hill, it's the whole whole front yard is parked or. I don't think we're going to get too much of that here, but you never know, like the house next to me, their entire backyard is paved over. Sorry. Yeah, that's the other one. We walked over to Kenworth and that that that's a new concrete pad. It's pretty big. It's you could play basketball on it. So I wonder if there shouldn't be some sort of guidelines where you have like a reasonable thing. If you. If you're going to have a nine foot driveway that goes up and slips by in your house, if you can't say, hey, if that's not feasible for somebody, allow them to kind of. Whether they're grandfathered or if it's new, like take that same square footage and rearrange it to a way that works on their lot, but go crazy.
I I do think, and I think I brought this up once before when we were considering a different. Element of the code that we ought to either. Maybe with this or through some other ordinance update. Consider whether we want to regulate the amount of impervious surfaces on properties, especially in consideration of potential future duplexes, triplexes. Complexes.
That's been kicked around a lot over the years and we're, yeah.
Agreed. I do have, I know we want to move on, but I had a question, Barb. I don't understand the section about service streets, seven thirteen.
That's in the existing code now. I.
What is it? Do we have those?
If you, I'm not aware, if I mean, a service street would be if you, because I go this way home every day. If you go out Connecticut Avenue towards Randolph. There is basically, you'll see there's houses on a service road.
The side road.
Yeah.
Can you imagine that we would ever have someone asking us to build a service street?
I don't think we have space for it.
Can we just remove that section? Does anyone see a need for that?
I can certainly ask the question as we're working to refine the ordinance.
Okay, that's fair. Could I just make another suggestion? I know, Barb, you were. Wanting to get this to a point of drafting before sending it to the committees, but. Honestly, I think some of the things we're flailing with or struggling with. We might be able to move forward if we had the input of the committees and knew what kind of. Community input from historic preservation, arboretum and land use and advisory committee. That input would help us, I think, rather than waiting until we have some perfect draft. To give it to them to look at, let them weigh in on some of these things that we're struggling with and not worry about trying to get it more perfected before we. Give them a chance to give some broad feedback.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? So at least it's a little bit further along. What I'm, I believe I'm hearing you say in terms of your consideration of a second curb cut. Would be the factors that are listed in. Seven twelve D. Obviously, 11 isn't relevant because that's referring to basic things we consider when we're reviewing permits. That you want to. Include include items one through 10 with the addition of. Something to the effect. something to the effect of unusual lot attributes as one of your criteria.
That was what I was recommending, if others are comfortable with that.
And that there would be some language somewhat, well, at least Phil seems supportive of this, is that when you consider the second curb cuts, that there would be a resulting written order, as there is with a variance, outlining your reasons for granting it. Is that something? Phil seems supportive of that, but I'm not sure where the rest of the group stands on that. But do I, am I correct that you want one through ten plus the unusual lot attributes? Is everyone in support of that for your consideration of the second entrance?
Yeah, so I just wonder if it should be clarified in there, like, inability to park in the back.
Another issue relates to what constitutes repairs and replacements and the need of a permit in section seven twelve C.
Right. And then do you all want a written order resulting from any decision to grant a second entrance or not?
Written order.
That's what you do with the variances.
Yeah.
We need the full lawyer thing now.
What'd you say?
Need the full, the full Ron Bolt treatment on that, though. For a driveway.
Or you can have Kayla and I playing lawyers with a license, but it would not be Ron Bolt, I want to be really clear about that, but I mean, if.
Okay, it's, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be as formalized as that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the variances are much more, I mean, it could kind of follow that template, but that has to be more formalized because of just the provision of state law. The second curb cut is with, yeah. Doesn't have to be quite that.
It would just be the Caleb Wucker treatment.
Some documentation.
Yeah, which could be in the minutes, I mean, as well. Maybe they're assuming I'll effectively delegate to someone who would do it better than me, Caleb.
By the way, there is a variance on seven twelve thirteen point one, with page four D has grant variances for off-street parking.
I'm sorry, where are you at, Phil? Seven thirteen?
Yeah, seven thirteen point one, but just flipped it to the next page, and look at D, which is right above seven fourteen.
Okay.
And there you'll find that there's that variance language.
Yeah, so maybe that's, maybe that language works.
And it does cover all the stuff we talked about.
Yeah, narrowness is.
Okay, so maybe that language.
Yep.
I think we're losing steam.
Yes, I think, that's okay. Do I have the latitude then to try to do my best to take these comments, incorporate them into something? And do you want me then to send it out to the committees, or would you like me to send it back out to you all? You obviously can't collectively, you know, chat over email, because that would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act, but I can certainly send it out, and each of you could respond individually if you want to look at it, or I can just edit it based on this discussion and send it out to the committees if everyone's.
Negative off basis, if you haven't heard from us for the next days.
Right, then go ahead and send it out. Good idea, Chris, thank you. I think I'm.
There is one more thing, my favorite one I wanted to get rid of, which was another, another good one was on E, we're looking on seven twelve E, and we've got the, it says however, this is the bolded, and at the bottom there, it says a curvable second entrance, however, may be considered by the town for property with a frontage on the street of more than ninety feet, and I would like to just get the ninety feet removed or changed. Nobody's, I mean, I don't know how many people have got ninety feet, it would automatically exclude anybody almost from getting the variance. Is it? Oh, cool. Well, we got one. Yeah, one there.
He's already grandfathered, though.
Yeah.
Ten or fifteen percent, yeah, it's pretty.
Yeah, it's a very small percentage.
It's, yeah. I mean, I don't know whether we can make it smaller, or just strike that.
And just allow these variances all over the place?
Well, no, the variances would have to be for some unusual topography, but right now, I mean, we could change it to sixty feet.
So, so the, the ninety-foot lot would be subject to the case-by-case, a single curb cut.
Right.
Or the case-by-case approval of one.
But see, this says that you have to have a ninety-foot lot even apply for being covered, because it's same, the way I read it, however, may be considered for property with a frontage on a street of ninety feet or more.
They never changed it from last.
Yeah.
Right.
Here is a suggestion, an alternative suggestion from Jason Azar that I don't believe I included. He said that that we could include something that says that any entrances for a circular driveway must be a minimum of thirty feet apart from edge to edge, and must meet setback requirements to intersections as outlined in the town standards. And the thinking was that you would need at least more than a sixty, sixty-foot interior lot at an absolute minimum, and more than eighty feet on a corner lot. If that's helpful at all.
So we could change it to sixty feet?
Me, if, you know, pick hers out, Jerry Lee.
Sure.
Is that a?
But, but I don't think that, like Phil said, the language should be changed so that it's not a width of the lot that allows you to get a case-by-case review.
Right. So I mean, or narrow it down significantly, I mean, I'm fine with narrowing it down significantly, so that many lots, like, I don't know how wide yours is, but.
Fifty.
Fifty, it's a lot, there's a lot of fifties. It's like half the town.
Yeah.
So what's the verdict? What is the verdict on this? What are you wanting me to do?
Just take out the dimension altogether, right?
That's what I would prefer, take out the dimension altogether.
You can always put it back in if we find the comments are leading towards that, because I think this discussion is going to lead towards a lot more than I had a couple of discussions with George Martin about, like, bugs him having, like, garages in the front, and that's kind of the, you know, something that could be considered, whether that, that should be discouraged, and then that kind of assumes you can get a driveway to the back, but if we can't get a driveway to the back, then that becomes moot. So I think it's gonna spur, this whole thing's going to spur a lot of interesting discussions about how how the town could look good. Right?
Okay, is there any amendments? And I will just go on my working town updates, so that.
I'll withdraw mine.
I can do the same.
Okay, so none.
Do I have a motion for a term?
Motion?
Second.
Not, notwithstanding that, Barbara, do you have enough on the various issues?
No, I, I was tempted to make a quip and say more than enough, but I'm not sure that was appropriate. I, I believe I do.
All you can have, all you can take, right?